Seventy-six degrees Fahrenheit.
Thank you. Yeah, but what's the humidity?
Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, or Select Board as you may wish to call it, of September 12th, 2023. This is a hybrid meeting, and therefore, the following notice has to be read into the record. This is to formally advise as required by General Laws, Chapter 38, Sections 18 through 25, pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on June 16th, 2021, as extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023. The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public meeting on Tuesday, September 12th, 2023, at 5:30 PM, beginning with executive session and opening to the public no sooner than 6:00 PM in the hearing room, Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. The public is welcome to attend either in person or via the alternative public access provided below, and that access information for computer contact or telephone is on the Yarmouth website. It's anticipated that we will go into executive session to consider pursuant to Chapter MGLA, Mass. General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A, to discuss potential litigation regarding zoning violations. And we had a property address on that, which is...
Yeah, 343 Route 28.
It's not on there. Property at 343 Route 28 West Yarmouth, Massachusetts. Do I have such a motion?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. This will call a roll call vote. So I'll go to Peter Q. Smith first.
Aye.
Mark Forrest.
Aye.
Ian Horgan.
Aye.
Dorcas McGurran.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well. We will stand in executive session. It's anticipated that we will proceed to the public portion of this meeting at 6:00 PM. It could be a little bit later than that if our executive session extends beyond what we anticipate. But if it does, it shouldn't be very long after 6 o'clock. We are in executive session. Welcome to the public portion of the meeting of September 12th, 2023. We start our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
For scheduling purposes, I want to get a show of hands of... And I'm going to start with Yarmouth residents. Yarmouth residents who wish to speak on the issue of the migrant housing...
The illegals?
Whatever.
The illegals.
Why don't you wait till you're recognized, ma'am? And let me say one thing, because I'm very irritated about something, and I'm a straight shooter. I don't hide things. Whoever walked in this room while we were in executive session, don't do that again. That is illegal. That is disrespectful. And we're not going to put up with it. I'll let you say whatever you want. I'll let you criticize whoever you want to criticize. I'll let you trash talk whoever you want to trash talk. That's your constitutional right. But you don't have a right to walk into an executive session meeting. And the next time someone does that, I won't even warn you. I'll have the police remove you. So let's be clear. And you'll get an opportunity to speak, but you won't interrupt other speakers. And I won't let anybody interrupt you either. All right, so who wants to speak on this issue? Show... Give me Yarmouth residents, show of hands. Not that many. I thought we'd have more. Okay. So what I'm going to do with public comment is I'm going to kind of clear the deck. I'm going to take public comment that's not related to this issue first, so we can dispose of that. And then what I'm thinking about doing, and I'll have to get the consent of my fellow board members, I'm thinking of advancing the 715 item, which is listed on the agenda as Yarmouth Resort migrant housing updating consideration of draft correspondence to the governor. I'm thinking about moving that up and consolidating that with public comment. Do people have any problem with that? Anybody out there? That way, we can get right to it. That way, if people have to leave or if there's elderly people that don't want to drive at night or whatever, we can accommodate those kinds of concerns. So anybody that wants to speak on public comment that's not related to that issue, now's your time. And give your name and address, please.
Sure. Don Roche, Baker's Path, Number 27, South Yarmouth, Mass. And I am from Precinct 2, and I just want to thank you so much for allowing me to do my purple flags out front and supporting my overdose awareness event. So it was sadly beautiful. We all came together nicely to recognize those and remember those that we've lost. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Debbie Clark?
Yes, I would like to speak...
Get the microphone towards you. Say, speak loudly into it, please.
I'd like to speak on behalf of myself in being on Recreation Board. I did notice in the agenda that I'm up for an alternate. No, I don't want that. That's a slap in my face after 30 years of being on this board and doing what I have done. And I really would like to thank the people who stood behind me on this with letters and showing up to speak on my behalf. I don't think there's an issue here at all. At our meeting, they asked us, "Who wants to be reappointed?" And the three of us said, "Yes." And then I hear differently. I'm there every meeting. I never missed a meeting in 34 years. I'm here for the kids. I'm here for the adults, for, you know, the problem kids, everything. And I appreciate everybody's support, and I'm hoping Dorcas will reappoint me as a regular member of the Recreation Commission. I mean, I asked them how many people are coming to knock down the door. Him told me, maybe one. And I think Dorcas has somebody also. We'll make them an alternate and keep me going. I'll know when I'm done. I really will. And I really thank everybody for the help and the support that you have given me. And I hope the board thinks twice about reappointing me again. That would make my day. And the life I've had has been horrible, so... And this is the only thing I love to do. You know, diversion program with the courts, you know, CPC. This is all stuff that I like and I like to do. And people have showed me the issue and what's going on, and I'm here. So please think twice, because I really, really need this for my self-sanitary with all the kids and the programs and everything. And I'm there for them. I have parents calling me up all the time. "Can you do this? Can you help me with this?" "No problem." Give you the shit off my back and any of you people. I don't have very many enemies at all, at all. So I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else on anything other than the main issue here? Okay.
No motion?
No, not yet. Almost. Just a couple of things I want people to understand on this issue. And I don't know if this will help... Oh, first of all, I want to... We have one selectman who's not physically present, but he is remotely, and that's Peter Q. Smith. Say hi to the crowd, Peter.
Hello, crowd. I am here.
I think you're safer where you are. This is the first time that the Board of Selectmen has met since this issue has arisen. And there's a reason for that. One is we have a very involved schedule that goes out sometimes for many, many months. And the biggest... It was a holiday. The next potential meeting was the Tuesday after Labor Day, and we typically don't meet the day after a holiday. We looked into possibly getting a room on Wednesday or Thursday. There was a planning board hearing here one of the days, and there was a Board of Appeals meeting here the next day. And when the thing went on hold, we felt, well, the urgency isn't as great as it was before the status became on hold. The public meeting law prohibits us from meeting in private. I can talk to one selectman, for example, about an issue, and I have conferred with Mark Forrest a little bit. But I can't then hang up the phone and call Dorcas and call Dan. That's a violation of the open meeting law. So this is the first time that I'm meeting with my colleagues on the board. I kind of got to guess what their positions are on these issues, but I'm going to let them speak for themselves, because I really don't know and I really haven't had the opportunity to do that. But I have been in constant communication, almost daily, with our town administrator, who has also been in constant communication with the state officials and with state representatives. And we're doing everything that we can do. And we're going to tell you tonight what we think we can do and what we think we can't do, what the issues are that are within our control and issues that aren't within our control. So having said that, I would entertain the motion at this point, Selectman Forrest.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request, I'd like to move that we advance and bring up, out of order, the item scheduled for 715, the Yarmouth Resort migrant housing update and consideration of draft correspondence by the Board to the Governor.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion before we move that to a vote? I see none. Selectman McGurran.
Aye.
Selectman Horgan. Selectman Forrest.
Aye.
Selectman Smith.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. So that matter is advanced. We have, in addition to getting information through our town administrator, who actually has performed admirably, very admirably, in protecting the town's interest from the beginning of this, what I call crisis into the present time, we have also monitored social media. I know the group has a Facebook page, and we're familiar with, not every comment, but the general flavor of the commentary. We've gotten a lot of emails on this issue. I've gotten phone calls. I've met people on the street. I think we're pretty well acquainted with people's feelings on this issue, but we're going to find out, hopefully, more tonight about that. But I wanted to dispel a few myths that I picked up from social media. There are accusations that the Board of Selectmen is somehow acting in concert with the state. There's nothing further from the truth. Bringing migrants to Yarmouth is not something Yarmouth officials or staff had anything to do with. I will have our town administrator at the appropriate time, perhaps, tell you how he first found out about it. He got his first mystery call saying, "We're going to move in 80 to 100 families next week." This is without precedent. This isn't something we've ever dealt with before. This isn't something that's ever happened to us before. And he immediately sent out a communication. I don't know if it was an email, wasn't it? Raising issues to protect the town's position. So to think that this is some kind of an agreement between Yarmouth and the state is totally ridiculous. It makes no sense at all. We're here to try to defend the town's interests and to represent the people of our community. That's what we're concerned with. The other thing is, we can't call up Governor Haley and tell her to stop. That's not going to happen.
Why not?
Why not? Because we don't have any power over the governor.
No is a strong word.
So why don't you wait till I recognize you? Is that there?
Yes, it is. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all right. That's all right, I hear you. I know there's a lot of emotions and everything like that, but we want to spend our time constructively and do what we think we can do and what hopefully we can get some results on. Let me see what else I wanted to say before we go further. Zoning violations. We had a meeting with our town attorney tonight. It went a little later than some of you people liked. Went about 45 minutes. We didn't get everywhere we wanted to get, and that meeting is going to be continued to another night. We got a lot of information, but not all the information that we wanted. This is legally complicated. I know that because I'm a practicing lawyer. I have over 40 years of experience. I know... I don't know every law, nor does any other attorney, but I understand this is not a simple matter. I understand that we have to educate also the lay members of our board, so they have to come away with an understanding of the issues. So we're working on that. We... The other point I want to make before we get going, and I hope I'm not boring my colleagues. The other point that I wanted to make is we've never even been afforded the opportunity to have any discussion with anybody in the governor's office about this issue. They haven't even invited us to say, "Do you have any concerns? How will this impact your community? What kind of support might you need if we move X number of families into your community?" We were told... We were told what was going to happen, as if it was a mandate. And I think but for the terrific work by our town administrator, that probably today would not be on hold. It would be fully occupied. That's my opinion. The other thing is, and maybe Bob can talk a little bit about this. We don't get complete or consistent responses from the state when we contact them. That's a problem. There's a big communication problem there. Why, I can't tell you. But we're told certain things, and they don't turn out to be the case. But that's not our fault. We continue to get as much information as we can. And I can only speak for myself, because I told you that this is the first meeting, and I want to hear briefly from my fellow board members. But I can tell you two things. One is I have no involvement with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in any shape, manner, or form as to what's happening. And I will tell you, number two, that I am totally committed to represent the interests of the people in my community. So having said that, if it's okay, I'd like each selectman, just if they wish, they don't have to. If they want to give a brief introductory response or express some of their concerns or feelings about this issue, they can do so. Again, because we've never met before publicly. And I kind of want to get a read as well. So I'll start with Selectman Forrest, if he has anything to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I want to just go on record as being in total agreement with your comments this evening. It has been an incredibly frustrating exercise for all of us. And I too want to go on record as commending the town administrator for keeping us posted, but also being very direct, very blunt with the state officials that he's been in communication with. It's obvious to us that not only is the communication poor, but the planning is poor. And we're certainly not the only community that is in this situation. Now, we've made recommendations to a number of elected officials in terms of how best to handle a migrant crisis like this in the state. I know that's not for the agenda for tonight. I know tonight, we have before us a letter, a very strong letter, that we are going to review and discuss later on to the Governor outlining yet again our concerns and going on the record with respect to this issue. I have read through the draft. I completely support it. And I'm anxious to hear, before I say anything else, just to hear from the residents who have come here tonight. They're obviously anxious to speak out, and I'm anxious to hear what they have to say. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Dan?
Good evening, everybody. My name's Dan Horgan. I am very appreciative of the fact that you're here tonight and the fact that you're out there on the sidewalks, letting people know how you feel, that you're right, and I really appreciate that. This is a very complicated issue. And as everybody at this diocese said, we're behind the eight ball in terms of getting information from the state. This is all happening without any communication, without any input by your town leaders. You know, we're talking about housing. That's one big issue. And people being displaced, issues that we've had with housing our own people, never mind people that are coming from elsewhere. That's a huge issue. Putting housing in hotels more than 30 days, huge issue. We spent years trying to stop that from happening in this town. Here we are, sitting back while the state does it to us. It's an issue. It's a problem. We're looking for solutions and answers and communication from the state. And it's not just housing. You all know, what is the impact going to be to our schools? What's it going to be to our fire and to our police, to our health? This hits so many core areas of our community. So please be assured that we are doing everything in our power with our legal representatives, with our town representatives, our... each of the people here to get the information so that we can make the best decisions possible and represent your interests going forward. We're glad you're here. But please don't assume that we're in conjunction or cohorts with what has happened here, because we are just as surprised as you. I don't want to lose sight of the fact, though, that we're talking about people here. You know, none of us... You know, we talk about crisis. Yes, it's a crisis, and we're trying to deal with all these issues. But these people are also in crisis. I don't want to lose sight of that. So...
We're going to let you talk.
I'm trying to balance all of the needs and be as open to your questions and concerns as I can be, so that we can make the best decisions possible. But please, remember that we're talking about people. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Dorcas, would you like to make any...
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you have heard from our fellow selectmen tonight, this came as a total surprise to us. We had no idea that this was going to happen. There has been no communication. I also want to thank our town administrator for the Herculean efforts he's made to try to get that information for us. We want to hear what all of you have to say. We want to represent our town. That's what we've been elected to do. But we also want to know, you know, where's the plan for these people? We haven't heard anything, you know? Why do they have to come to Yarmouth? You know, who's going to pay for them? There are all kinds of questions that have to be asked. And there are some important questions for us. As you've heard, we have zoning regulations in this town that are important, that keep occupancy in our hotels to 30 days. What happens on day 31? How are we going to know what's happening as far as when these people are coming, how many people are coming? Are other towns being affected? We are with you on this. But please give us a chance. We are working as hard as we can. I also recommend you should be in touch with your state representatives and your state senator.
I think everyone in this room has contacted... None of us has gone...
Well, you can do it more than once. That's important as well. There you go. But we are... We appreciate your being here. And I just ask also, we want to hear what everyone has to say. Please give them a chance to speak. And when one person's speaking, please, everyone else, be quiet so we can hear what they have to say. Your turn will come as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorcas. Peter Q. Smith, over in Never Never Land. Would you like to make some comments?
A couple of them. We heard at the last minute that there were going to be roughly 80 to 100 people that were going to be at the Yarmouth Resort. Our town administrator contacted the state immediately and indicated that there are code violations at that particular location. And as a result, for the time being anyways, that location does not have any. Now, there are, I believe it's 10 or 12 families who have shown up at the other motel in town. We've been in contact with Healy's office, our two reps, and our state senator. And also, I was listening to a press conference that Healy held. And she is well aware of the cost to the various towns, and she's trying to get money from the state legislature and perhaps even from Uncle Sam to help out. And we are going to continue to be in contact with our state reps, our state senator, and Healy's office, and see if we can get this thing moved forward. We don't want to be handed a fait accompli. We want to have some planning and knowing exactly what's going to happen. And again, as everyone else has said, we are glad that you're out there, expressing your concerns, and we have the same concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. I may cut back, not right now, but I may cut back a little later to our town administrator and let you get a sense of some of his involvement. But I want to hear from some people out there. Who wants to step up first? Yarmouth residents, yeah. I want to hear from Yarmouth people. Go up there to the microphone, or if people are closer to the front, if they want to come up to the front microphone. Please speak loudly and directly into the microphone. Identify yourself by name and address, please.
Georgie Ann McCouch, concerned resident of Yarmouth for over 40 years. 18 Captain Bessie. Couple of things that concern me is you're not getting answers from the state. And the governors of these states are not getting answers from the federal government either. Governor Hochul went down to talk to Biden, and she was not seen. I'm sure if Healy goes down, it's not going to have time for her. So it's a chain reaction going on here. You're not getting answers. on here. You're not getting answers. So if you don't get answers and you got support from your state or the federal government, we're not going to go anywhere, because this has been going on for three and a half years with people overlooking. And of course, they were going to span them all out. They come in at night in cars and whatever. My main concern is the health of my grandchildren. These kids are going to start going to school. They have walked through the jungles of South America. They have just walked in. We don't know what diseases they have. Our kids are required to have vaccinations, or they're not allowed in these schools. And I am going to request and demand that the Health Department puts together an agenda for every single child that ends up in our town before they set foot on a school bus, let alone sit next to my grandkids in school. And I will, I will keep the Health Department accountable. So if there is a certain meeting or whatnot, but I want to see it in writing, what these kids are required to have before they go in and sit next to my grandkids. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Very good, very, very good point, ma'am. And I can tell you, I have two little grandchildren, and I have the exact same concerns. Yes, sir.
Craig Williams, South Yarmouth. I've heard about what the town administrator's been doing, and I'll commend him on that. And I want you to hold the governor's feet to the fire. Because I don't think, if you're not on them, they're not going to do anything. It's going to fall on a deaf ear. There's all kinds of violations over at the Yarmouth Resort over there. I'd say you should drag your feet on taking care of all of that, as long as you keep them out of there. But I think you should just tell her no. Pack them up on a bus and send them back to Maura Healy's house. I don't, I just don't think it's right. They should jam all of these illegals down our throat. I don't want to pay for it, and I doubt anybody else in this room wants to pay for it. And I want you people to stay after the whole thing coming into this town. As the previous lady said about the schools, I'm very concerned about the schools with the kids. Normally, when you migrate to the United States, you should know how to speak English. So while they're trying to teach everybody in school in Spanish, it's going to draw back the American kids. Because they're going to spend all their time trying to teach English to the Spanish-speaking kids. I just don't think it's right. I don't think it's right. They should not go to school without vaccinations besides. And I have a whole, I have a whole long list. I don't want to get into it. We'll get everybody else here.
I don't think, sir, this is going to be the last meeting we're ever going to have on this issue. I really don't. I think this is going to be an ongoing problem, and we're going to have to have a whole series of meetings. We might even dedicate an entire night to a meeting if we have to. But this is an evolving situation, and it's all predicated on information. And we're getting very, we're getting it almost trickling effect. We're not, we're not getting a lot of straight dialogue.
We just can't say no. Don't send them here.
No, I heard you the first time.
I mean, I can get the number for P and B. We can always send them back to wherever they came from.
We'll pay for it.
It's cheaper than putting them through school.
Just a quick comment, because I want to try to keep things organized in people's minds. As far as I know, the population that has been arriving here are not Spanish-speaking. They're Haitians. And they speak Creole, number one. Number two, in our, in our school systems, we have what they call ELL teachers, which are called English language learners, teachers. And they teach, they teach non-English speaking kids. And it does not take away from regular classroom instruction, because...
So are they in their own separate classroom?
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. But I'm going to tell you something, sir. My daughter's an ELL teacher, and a lot of those kids, through that supplemental help, learn to speak English quite well, then move on into the regular classroom session. She speaks Portuguese, Spanish, and English.
French?
No. But I do. Yes, next. Ma'am?
So my name is Cheryl Ball, and my address is 38 Hemian Drive. And I am a concerned citizen. And I came here tonight with 100 of my newest friends. I think most of you here on the board have heard my name. And you've probably, as you mentioned, been taking a look at our Facebook group. I think one of the things I want you to take away from what I have put together, all of this was mobilized in less than two weeks. There's a sense of urgency that I think a lot of us aren't feeling from you guys. And we really need you to be communicating with us, showing us what pressure you're putting on the state, and just letting us know exactly what is happening. There's a lot of fear that you're going to be hearing from all of these people tonight. We don't know what we don't know.
Neither do we.
And our list of concerns is huge, and it's valid. And we need to put together that list of questions. We need you to be asking us for what our concerns are. I don't think anyone has reached out to us to find out what our concerns really are, to quantify that list.
So far, I've not been, I don't have any surprises so far, to be honest with you. We felt the most immediate thing was to try to work within myself and Mark and town administrator, trying to get information.
And in addition to the fears that we have about our own community, we fear we're losing Cape Cod. You know, Cape Cod is a special and beautiful place. It's not just a problem for our town. We need you guys to be working with the other towns to have a unified front on this. It's not just us. You know, we have friends in other towns on this Cape, too. And we just really need you to be putting together, you know, an aggressive plan on how you're going to tackle this for us. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Joseph Delisio. I also live on 38 Hemian Drive with Cheryl. First of all, I want to thank all of you, and especially for your efforts. Speaking to some people, finding out the letter that you wrote, it impacted our state government and put a stop to what was happening. I'd like to make a recommendation to all of you. The biggest problem, as I'm seeing, I'm behind the scenes, Cheryl does all the posting and stuff, and I'm the guy that reads all the posts. But we need information, and we need it immediately. So my recommendation to all of you is to start an information page, maybe add it to the town's website or something that we can look at every day and find the answers, and find the work that you're doing for us. Because after all, you do work for us. We're all concerned citizens. I'm concerned for the police department, the fire department, for the safety of our town residents. You know, when we drove here, we drove by the residents where they're housing some of those illegals, and there was, there was an ambulance there. God only knows what's going on, right? Who knows what's going on? But everything, everything goes through our mind, wondering what's happening, okay? So I think the best thing you can do for all your, all the residents here in Yarmouth, is to put out a site that we can all look at and be communicative back and forth. So again, thank you, police officers. Thank you. God bless you all. Fire, thank you. God bless you all. And let's maintain the safety of our town here, first and foremost, before we do anything else. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Daniel Kavanaugh. I'm a resident of Yarmouth, 25 Nicholas Drive in Yarmouth, Florida. First, I'd like to thank the members of the select board, all the members, Mr. Rittner, for navigating through uncharted waters. It's uncharted for all of us, literally. While there's many questions I could think to ask, I'm going to focus on one specific aspect. I'm a product of the D Y school system, D Y class of 84. I consider myself very fortunate to be a, have gone through the D Y school system. I consider it to be an excellent system. A sibling of mine went through, my children went through. It's helped me tremendously in life. And my concern is, we are going to be potentially faced, we are being faced, with a number, an unknown number of children who are arriving in town. And my concern would be, what effect is this going to have specifically on the D Y school system in terms of a head count? Could this be 20 children, 30, 40, whatever, whatever that number is? How soon can that number be ascertained? And how would that factor into the D Y budget, which is, as far as I know, it's already set for this calendar year, this fiscal year? If it is a large number, we don't know what the, the people that are arriving are arriving in, as families. What the definition of a family is, is not quite clear. Two, three, four children, whatever. There will be some number of children. So again, specifically, what the head count will be, how that will affect the budget, and when we might know that information. Because I think that would be, it's, it's going to be incumbent. We, the Yarmouth taxpayers, are going to have to directly fund that essentially immediately, I would, I believe. It's going to have to become a part of the town budget, whether it's through an override or what have you. And again, I don't know how that information can be ascertained, but I think that would be one very important thing to, to consider. As Tip O'Neill famously said, "All politics is local." It doesn't get any more local than this. And God bless you. You guys are, you are our voice right now to a situation, as Mr. Bastille from H I S News has said, "Perhaps the most important story he has ever covered." This is affecting the country from coast to coast, north to south, east to west. And again, as I said, uncharted waters, we are in uncharted waters. Thank you.
Before the next speaker speaks, I want to comment just briefly, if I could, on your comments, sir, the very cogent remarks. But I want to use this opportunity to inform the people how the, it will impact our school budget. There's no question about that. So the way the school budget works, and this is, this is important to, we don't have your numbers, and we have the same concerns, and we have to get those numbers, because we can't do a budget without those numbers. But just bear with me, and you'll see what I'm, the point I'm getting at. The way the, the budget is structured is the state tells the towns of Dennis and Yarmouth, who are the partners in the regional school system, what's a minimum contribution that each town has to make. And it's required. It's a mandatory number. And then, to embrace the rest of that budget over and above the mandated portion, there's an allocation between the two towns based on student population. What's interesting, and you prompted this in my mind when you spoke, is that that allocation's based on the student population as of the prior October. So whatever this school population is between Yarmouth and Dennis, as of this October, will drive that portion of the next school budget. So we're going to be watching it like a hawk, because we have to. So Dennis has got that, they're meeting tonight, too, I believe. They got a proposal to do a housing arrangement at Eagle Pond. And I don't know how many families that will entail or whatever, but it's going to be, and maybe the two towns have got to meet and say, hey, this is extraordinary. We got to break away from that conventional formula, because one of, or the other of us can really get hammered, depending on how many school-aged kids come out of a population housed in Dennis versus Yarmouth. So it's, the dynamic is, it's interesting. It's also complicated. Now, the state says they will reimburse education costs, but part B of the issue you raised is going to be how much, what's the actual student cost, and what's the reimbursement, and what's the shortfall? I don't know this for a fact, but I suspect there's going to be a shortfall. There generally is with state reimbursement. But go ahead, sir.
Thank you. My name is Jerry O'Connell. Me and my four brothers, we grew up here in Yarmouth, all attended Yarmouth schools. My parents own businesses here. After my time, when I retired from the Marine Corps, I came home to my small town. I noticed my town was different, changed. The last few years, it's changed a lot. And it's going to continue to change. I think these people are going to be shoved down our throat. I don't think they're going to be sent away. I don't think there's anything we can do about it. I hate to say that, but there's probably going to be more coming. My question is, and my proposal is, since there is no plan, can we make a plan? What can we do here in Yarmouth? Can we, can we take this into our hands and have some, has anybody been to the hotel besides some guy who drove by in a pickup truck to harass somebody of color? Has anybody been to the hotel to speak to the people and represent the town? Has anybody wondered, you know, hey, can we go talk to these people? I mean, it's like if a spaceship landed in your backyard, you're not going to, you know, you're going to go talk and say, what's going on here? That's what we have to do. Why can't we form a committee, a group of people, and go talk to these people? I mean, hell, they're human beings just like we are.
They don't speak our language.
They do. You'll find English speakers over there. You will. All right? Put the pitchfork away and think like a Cape Carter. Because most of the people in this room, you came here, and we welcomed you. Okay? You came here, and Cape Cod welcomed you. All right? Now, we're Cape Carters, and we have to welcome these people, because you can't get rid of them. You're not going to get rid of them.
If we have teachers that can teach them language, we can have them all with us to their hotel.
Right. So that's why. Can we form a committee, a committee to get together, think about this, and take some action? If the government at the state level is not going to give them physicals, why can't we give them physicals?
What's the option that you want to take?
Why can't we form a committee, go talk to the people, screen them ourselves for help?
We're going to open up the dialogue.
We can try to do something. Look at...
All right, timeout.
...are here to stay. We're here to stay.
We can't, we can't get in the dialogue arguments between, this is ridiculous.
I am just proposing...
Look, look at me.
I am proposing, sir, that we as a town put a committee of people together to talk to these people. They're human beings just like we are. Okay? Granted, oh, they might have diseases. Well, we don't know that yet. They don't speak English. You don't know that.
Don't argue back and forth.
Which I'll bring crayons.
Don't argue back and forth. So do you have anything else?
No, I don't, sir. But I have time to do this.
You want to say there's, you want to get a committee to approach these people to see if there's a constructive solution to these problems?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I have time to do that myself.
Okay. Who's next?
Howard Stagg, 23-year Yarmouth resident. Grew up on the Cape. I want to remind, again, I'll start by saying thank you very much. Thank you, officers. Thank you for our first responders. Everybody, this is going to have to work overtime in order to take care of this situation for us. I want to remind everybody, we'll piggyback a little bit to COVID. We got a seven-days incubation period before people started to show symptoms of being sick. All right? So there was a, another gentleman spoke before about the ambulance that was in the Harper Side Hotel. Okay? So the detail to it, which I found out from a, one of the gentlemen's over there with a video camera doing an interview, was a six-month-old baby that was bleeding. Now, was the baby fall and bleeding because of that? I don't know. Did the baby have tuberculosis? We don't know. Anyway, what I'm, another point that I'm trying to make here is if there was other people in that hotel that are being admitted to our schools, and they are subjected to tuberculosis or some godly-known other disease that has a long incubation period, you're going to get our kids sick that are in the school system at D Y? So I'm asking you folks as a selectman in order to put some type of moratorium together, in order to keep those kids out of school until there's some type of period of time that goes by, that any disease will surface before they get the rest of our kids sick. Because I don't want my son, who goes to the high school, to come home and then get me sick. And I don't want your child or your grandchild to get sick and bring it home so you get sick. Need to do something on the school level to keep everybody and protect the kids from getting sick.
So we'll, we'll check, we'll check with the school and find out what their health policy is and what they're doing about this, and report back on that.
Hi, Susan Quinn, 48 Meadowbrook Road, West Yarmouth. I've been in healthcare 37 years. And I'm here to tell you today that that's a... I've been in healthcare 37 years, and I'm here to tell you today that that's a really good point. It could be anything, you know, COVID, TB, you don't know, AIDS, whatever's coming from any country. It's just, that is a really important point, and we need Mara Healy and the rest of them up there to support us. Do we have any information on these people? Have they had any kind of shots? Is there any information that we could get? Because if not, they absolutely, positively should not be in with other kids or anything. I mean, not just the children, what about the, there's a lot of elderly people that volunteer in the schools, and, you know, just people in general, walking in the supermarkets. We don't want to be in a worse situation than we are now. It's just not being handled correctly. These people are not, they didn't, my family came from Ellis Island, you know, the Italian side and the Irish side came as well that way. So, and we ended up in Boston. I moved to the Cape nine years ago, because it's nice and quiet and beautiful. And I just cannot believe that now the city is coming to the Cape, and it's not being handled properly. Now, properly is you come in just like everyone else. Why are these migrants allowed and all those other people aren't? And what about people that I know that are on lists, waiting lists, that are friends of mine, family members trying to get in, that may never get in, 10, 15, 20, 30 years? So if we don't stop this now, it's just going to continue. It might be 10 families, or six, or five, it's going to be 10,000. And we have a few more years before we see who the next president is. It's not fair to anybody, especially the police and the fire, and we can't go over there, because that'll have a riot. These people will be so intimidated and afraid, that isn't the right way to handle it. If you want to set up a committee and that kind of thing, and maybe set up like a clinic they could go into and find out, you know, if we can't get anything from the state level, find out, you know, do you need shots or whatever, you can talk to the parents, that kind of thing. But think about it, they, they're going to be so scared to death if people start going over there. That could be like a riot situation. Yeah.
Stay there for just a minute?
Sure.
Because you might have some further comment. Our town administrator, Bob Rittenhour, kind of signaled to me that he has something on this issue.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I'm hearing a lot of concerns about infectious disease, vaccinations, and the like, and I need to tell you, one of the things that we did even today, conducted an emergency session with our various departments, we're inventorying, you know, the concerns that we have at, all of which, the, the items that you've raised, have been raised by the, some of the department heads and shared that with the state. And I received a report from our health director this morning that the state has a rapid-response medical team that is on-site evaluating a medical condition and conducting health screening for all of the folks that have been placed in our community, and that, that's an ongoing process, and there is professional medical care...
Here?
Here, in Yarmouth.
Why didn't they do it before they sent them? Why didn't they do when they took them out of the plane?
They said that they had, uh, uh, health screenings at a welcome center, we didn't get those results, that there are medical professionals on-site conducting health screenings.
I hope you can get some serious, I hope you can get more concrete evidence of that, and then I, I hope, I hope it's happening, I know. I, I wonder, but...
So you have people on-site, when they say on-site, do they mean, or do they mean in Boston?
No, I, I referenced, I was informed today that there is on-site in Yarmouth, the rapid-response medical team conducting health screenings, and looking after medical issues and concerns.
And those people aren't required to be working with the town officials, hand-in-hand?
Yeah, we need to have a representative.
No, ma'am, to answer your question, there's never been any hand-in-hand, there's never been any mutual dialogue, let alone hand-in-hand.
You don't even know where this welcome center thing is, why wouldn't our first responders or our police have been given notification as to where this is?
I pay for my healthcare.
Ma'am, your turn.
Kristen Whitney, Melissa Drive, West Yarmouth. Hello. I realize that you guys probably feel like you're banging your head up against the wall, you're not getting information, we're not getting information, and that's probably where some of those Facebook posts have come, you know, like, we feel like you're in cahoots, because we're not getting information. And my question to you is, where exactly do you stand? I, I mean, I've heard a lot of word salad, like, "We're representing the town," you know, "we're," and that's what, you know, what you're supposed to say, but where, do you want them here, or are we just going to acquiesce that they're here and move on and try to solve the problems that come with them? I mean, or should we just take a playbook from the vineyard? Because that's what I feel like.
Yeah.
You're glaring at me.
I'm listening and thinking about what you're saying, I mean, it's, it's really hard to answer that question without knowing what the state's plan is. Did it, how long do they...
But my question is, is where do you stand?
How long do they plan on keeping these people in this location? I don't know.
Yeah, but once they're here, they're here, but where do you all stand?
But I don't know that. I don't know.
You don't know where you stand? You don't know your feelings on this? Where do you stand? Do you want them here?
I, my job is to enforce local regulations, local zoning requirements...
And represent your people.
Correct. That's correct.
Well, I think a lot of us, I mean, we have a laundry list of concerns that, that when, when they're here, but, I mean, what are we doing to make it so they're not here? I'm not, not a people person, don't, I mean, don't get me wrong, but we have a lot of issues that we have here. We don't need extra.
Let me, I think this is an appropriate time, Bob, to break away just briefly, because I think this is important, to explain how it is that these motels open themselves up to have these people live there. So what happens is, what happens is, this arrangement is between the state and the, and the properties, the property owners. Has nothing to do with us, nothing. It has nothing to do with us. So what they do is they send out what they call...
I didn't really get an answer, did I?
A request for responses. And they have, it's 13 pages long, it's on the government website, and it lists the criteria that these places are supposed to have in order to be considered as a site by the state. And one of the things that they have, one of the things that they have on the proposal is the...
Well, in the next town...
Ma'am, just let, let me speak, I, I didn't interrupt you. So what they have is, you got to commit for, it's either like 11 months or a year, and give the state, what was it, about how many options to renew? One-year options on the RF, on the RFR? Is it 20 or 10? Is it 10?
Something like that, 10 probably.
The state, like, 10 one-year options. So these, these property owners have to make a major league commitment to the state to be considered as a site for the state. We have, we have no input into that. We have no input into that, we have no way to control that. If I owned a motel, I could respond to the state and say, "Sure, I, I would love to take these people, how much are you paying?"
But it's not meeting the town requirements.
You already said that we only had a 30-day stay in our motels.
Okay. All right, sit down. Sit down, I'm going to answer your question. I'm going to answer your question, sit down. Did you go to law school, sir?
Not yet.
Okay, good, because I think you should start. Now, the 30-day requirement, we're trying to ascertain from our town attorney what is, whether or not that can be superseded when a governor declares a state of emergency.
So that's how you're trying to stop it, is that your answer? Because you still haven't answered.
We don't, we don't take action or create action plans, ma'am, till we have all the information and know what our chances of success are.
We know the information, they're here, we know the concerns we have, obviously, everybody...
If we can enforce the 30 days, we will, we will en... Ma'am, sit down, sit down! All right, I'm going to have you removed. Officer, would you get this lady out of here, please?
No! 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 Oh, my God! Freedom of speech! For Ross, we don't work for you.
And you didn't answer her question.
She asked you a direct question. You just told her...
You can speak in an orderly manner, but you can't disrupt the meeting, there's a difference.
Do you want to answer a question?
Who's next?
Mary Lynn Galgano, I live at...
Would you let this lady speak? Would you let this lady speak?
Mary Lynn Galgano, I live at, excuse me, 26 Erickson Way. I have a few comments. I've been here for 11 years, and yes, I was welcomed, however, we pay taxes, and unlike these people, of course, they're all illegal aliens. I come, I am in healthcare, I, I'm in home care, I work off Cape, and I'm from the Lawrence and Lowell area, and I have seen Lawrence and Lowell go down the tubes with all the excessive illegal immigration that is flooding into both of those cities. And, and the surrounding communities are all very heavily negatively affected. The, one little bit of information, Rockland County in New York, I found out, was able to keep a whole flock of illegal aliens out by, as, because they said that they, the motel or wherever they were going to put them was not zoned as, as a shelter, as a homeless shelter. So they were able to keep them out with that, because we know we're going to be getting tons more. They're trying to normalize illegal immigration, you know, you're not supposed to say illegal aliens, that's what they are, we know they are, they don't belong here, and I don't blame them for coming, because if I was them, my God, it's a free ride, everything's free in America, they get free everything, and it's way better than where they came from. So in that sense, I don't bother them, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't blame them. All these people and all these, you know, the ones who aren't coming for nefarious reasons, and plenty of them are, you know, they want a better life, and over here, they'll certainly get it, and it's going to be handed to them. You know, maybe some of them will work, I mean, you look at down in Market Basket and Bourne, they're all, they're, I'm sure they're all illegal. None of them speak English, they're all Guatemalan or, or Colombian or something, they appear to be hard workers, but they have to be all illegals. How did we ever get that many all at once that don't speak English? But, you know, we, we can't keep this up, they're trying to, the Healy administration, you knew it was coming when she got in, they're trying to normalize this, that this is some humanitarian crisis, and it's of their making. We didn't have a humanitarian crisis before Biden got in there, it was well-controlled, now it's non-stop, we've had 7 million illegal aliens come into this country since Biden has been in office. We are paying, we are paying $45 million a month for the state. Yep, per month, per month. Per month.
Where did you guys find all that money?
And, and that's the thing, it's like, wait, wait till they start raising our taxes, because they've already, they're scaring all the wealthy people out because of the millionaire's tax, so the people who can leave, they're going to be gone. And they don't stick these people in their communities, that's why they didn't put them, the beautiful people, including Obama. This is part of the fundamental transformation of the country into a third-world hellhole. That was the plan under Obama, and now we're living it. We are fundamentally transforming the country into a third-world hellhole. And, and our taxes, the, the inflation is going to go out of control, welcome to Venezuela, and it's coming. And if we don't all stand up, and we don't realize that this is only going to get 10 times worse, and each and every one of us are going to be negatively impacted, and the crime is going to go absolutely through the roof. All, all these military-aged young men that come in here, I mean, you know, wait till the uprising, it's coming, at some point it's coming. But it's, it's frightening, and, and we need to stand up and stop and stop normalizing this and allowing them to normalize this, this is some humanitarian crisis, like, you know, every country but ours has had, you know, has, has blown up or had a nuclear bomb, and we have to take every person, how many millions upon millions, by the time that fool is out of there, they're going to have increased the population by close to 10% with illegal aliens during his administration. That's disgraceful. These people, most of them are contributing nothing, and even if they are working, they're all getting, they're all getting subsidies.
He knows what he's doing.
All right, ma'am, can, can you move on, because I've got some other people, thank you.
Good job, thank you.
Got some people on the screen that want to be heard too, that I want to get to, go ahead.
I'm Kathleen, I live in, on Finch Lane in West Yarmouth, and I, I had just a couple of points. One of them you just reached on, or you touched on, is how is the governor's office getting the names of places where they can just bring the people, the immigrants here? And, and, and how come, if those apartments or those facilities are available, why aren't we putting in our friends, our neighbors that are looking for apartments?
They were in there, and they were forced out. American citizens were forced out.
Right.
And we did nothing, and we don't know where they are. They're probably living off the street, this cannot continue.
Ma'am, whether it's speak, go ahead.
That's okay. So that, that was one thing, is how is the governor's getting, the, the, she's, you know what she's doing to you, right? She's not paying any attention to any of you, she's going over your head and saying, "I got the place to send them." And as a business...
Pretty obvious, yeah.
Yeah, and so, I mean, I'd be outraged, you know, we had COVID, it was an epidemic. This is a crisis, another epidemic that's hit us, it's going to affect our elderly, our, us, our, our babies. We should be so outraged, like, shame on Yarmouth, and I'm not just talking about the board, I'm not saying the board, I'm saying shame on Yarmouth, if we're not out there making as much noise as we can. Our local newspaper isn't even picking up the crisis.
I, I understand that.
And so, we're not making enough noise. This should be a national news. I know it's hit a few stations, but it's not out there enough.
It may be before you get done.
I hope so. And as a business owner in Yarmouth, there have been many times legitimate, no offense, and I, by the way, kudos to our police and our firefighters, or what they're going to have to go through. And I support them, and I always have supported them. But as a business owner, there have been many times, you know, they're doing their job, not me, not just me, but there are other, our friends in business locally, and they come by and they check codes, which they should, you know, a code, "Oh, you got to fix this, don't, you can't have this, you got to fix this, no, you can't have that flag, no, you can't have a poster." Why isn't that happening to these units where these illegals are? Where the immigrants, or whatever we're calling them now? You know, maybe they should be shut down, maybe there's a few violations. I went through that hotel tonight after work on the way over here. That, that whole pool area and the doors wide open, I mean, that's, that's a dangerous situation over there. I don't understand how they can be occupying. And then the last thing is, and I'll keep quiet, and I thank you for letting me speak, what is this doing to our real estate taxes?
That's right.
No one's going to want to live here, they're all leaving.
That remains to be seen, ma'am, and I think one of the big drivers is going to be, as I mentioned before, what impact this has on our schools.
Well, our schools, yes, but overall, yes, on our schools, obviously, but real estate taxes...
Other services as well. It, it may impact police, fire, health.
Of course it is. We're paying for them somehow.
But we don't even know what the number of people's going to be to make any kind of, uh, an intelligent assessment at this point.
You know that there are illegal immigrants that came in and went into the Brentwood or the Harbor House, or whatever it's called over there? I think the name changed, so...
Harbor View?
Why, why is it that, I guess the town office or somebody finds out that we now have several families that got shipped in at 9 o'clock at night and whatever? Why isn't that public knowledge? Everything's a secret.
Well, I'm going to answer your question, I'm going to answer, I'm going to answer your question. I got a text, I got a text message at 8 o'clock Friday night from my town administrator, guy's on it 24/7, and it said that he had heard from one of our state representatives that some, quote, migrant families were going to be moved into that facility either Saturday... that some, quote, migrant families were going to be moved into that facility either Saturday morning or Saturday evening. On Sunday, I sent him a text, and I said, "Bob, have you heard anything from the state about whether those people were placed in that motel either Saturday morning or Saturday evening?" And he said, "I haven't heard anything." Monday morning, I get a text from a constituent with a clip from Hyannis News documenting that there were indeed people that were moved in, I think it was Sunday night. Excuse me?
Nothing nefarious.
Middle of the night.
We got no advance notice, other than, other than that they were going to be moved in at some time Saturday morning. That's what we're dealing with on a day-to-day basis. And Bob's doing his best to keep track of this, to get as much information as he can get, but as I said earlier, the communications are not complete, and they're not consistent.
And who else is here that we don't know about?
There's lots of them.
Go ahead, ma'am, finish up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How long is it going to take to repeal, uh, right to refuge in Massachusetts, the only state that has it left?
Okay, you have a timely question.
Or amended.
I saw State Representative Exaros here earlier, but...
Yeah, he's, he's on the board getting rid of it.
He filed, he filed legislation, I believe, today to do that.
Part of the state, it'll never happen.
To do that. Now, what, what happens to it from there, I can't tell you, but, but that legislation apparently was just filed. Um, I'm going to go to the screen to grab a few people, and then we'll come back. Who's on the screen that wants to be recognized? Huh?
There's five hands up, but there's so many people that I can't see whose hand's up, so maybe David in the back room can help us find those folks with the hands up.
Let's go with Karen Crowley. There's a name. Karen, can you hear us?
She's muted.
Unmute yourself.
She's got her hands up. Karen, will you unmute yourself?
I am here, but I'm just listening. Thank you.
All right, we can hear you now, Karen.
Put your hand down.
Okay.
What would you like to say?
I'm just listening.
Oh, she was just listening. Oh, okay. So who's next? Vida Morris. A familiar voice. Vida.
Hello. I think I just unmuted myself, did I?
Can you speak up, please?
Hello? Can you hear me now?
Not, not as loudly as I would like, but I can hear you.
Well, uh, I just, I wanted to say that I'm a little bit off, uh, mark here with the rest of the people, uh, but you know, when suggestions are made that various interested parties contact their representatives and the senator and the this and the that, uh, nobody seems to mention the closest group, uh, here on the Cape itself. We have, uh, something called the Cape Cod Commissioners and the delegates and even a commission, you know? And I just, I think that the people who are the commissioners in particular, I think, uh, have been very, very quiet, and in fact, the only thing that we have heard from them is that they obviously spent quite a lot of time coming up for, with a new euphemism to be used for the illegal aliens, and apparently that's the new arrivals. Is that the best that they can do? Honestly, I think we need, at this point, to consider that that is, that that whole of, uh, county government thing is such, uh, I think, a useless and very expensive proposition that we start, we need to start looking into jettisoning that whole, uh, arrangement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Who else, Bob?
Let's see. Thomas J. Sullivan.
Tom Sullivan? Tom!
Hi, Mr. Chairman, how are you?
Go ahead, Tom. Speak up, please.
Okay, um, I think the dork has hit the nail on the head. Um, I'm a little upset that you're leaving it up to Jay, the county attorney.
Tom, we're not getting good, uh, audio from you.
I've got my audio, uh, Paul, try it all the way here.
We're going to check with the back room and see if...
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I, uh, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Okay. I believe that the only option to town, and I speak as a resident of West Yarmouth and also one who attends town meeting regularly, I voted for this bylaw, the motel bylaw, and I done, have looked at it the last few days, and I looked at it where it's the extended bylaw that's in question here. There is no motel, and I talked to building commissioners before I speak. There are, there is not any motels in the town of Yarmouth that qualify for, under the extended motel bylaw. They don't meet the requirements. They don't meet the fire suppression system requirements. They don't meet the access requirements from the street, just to name a couple. All right? These residents are, this is being forced on us by an anarchist called the governor. I have to admit, say that. This governor has no respect for the law, or the respect for the townspeople, for the legislative by, uh, voters in this town who passed the law. I would say that the best option for the town is to go into court and get a stay. Let a judge decide this. It will take some time, but at least you have other options. You can also appeal it to a higher court if it's overruled. I don't believe she has the authority to overrule the bylaws. She was asked last Thursday at a meeting with the legislators, uh, excuse me, I will correct that. The lieutenant governor was asked with a meeting with the legislators in a closed meeting. They asked her, does the emergency declaration by the governor have the right to overrule zoning bylaws? The answer was, we have to get back to you. They know that they are violating these laws, and they're going to get away with it as long as we allow it. I wish that we, uh, the town would push this to get it into court, whether it be at Superior Court or maybe even federal court, because the state constitution and the federal constitution is being violated on this. These people are in this country illegally. They have committed a crime. They are listed as felons. And they, the owner of these hotels, in cooperation with the governor, is aiding and abetting them, which is a federal crime. So, that's where it stands, and that's how I would stand, and I really wish that the board, instead of talking it to death, will actually take action and get this into court as soon as possible. Thank you.
Who else?
This gentleman's been waiting patiently right here. How about him?
Wait a minute. Joe Glenn, and then we'll go to him. Joe?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes.
Joe Glenn, West Yarmouth, Precinct 6 of the 2nd Barnstable District, the same Barnstable district that represented, was represented by Colonel James Otis Sr. and by James Otis Jr. Both of them represented Barnstable 2nd District. Colonel James Otis was also the presiding judge of the Barnstable Court, which I'm sure you have served in front of. And, and during the protest of 1774 of the British Intolerables Act, in, in meeting the protesters' demand, Judge Otis agreed to ignore the Parliament's intolerable, Parliament's intolerable acts preserving the county's right to self-government. That's the townspeople of Yarmouth, the oldest town on Cape Cod, which also included Dennis at the time. And James Otis Jr. also represented the district, and he became a lawyer, like yourself, became famous for opposing writs having to do with illegal searches. And he coined the very famous phrase, "Taxation without representation is tyranny." That is from people from the Barnstable District. And you yourself, Mr. Chairman, and the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen stood up during COVID, and you went to the law. And, and I, I think this notion that the governor can do anything she wants under the color of law in an emergency declaration, it's, is, is not only unconstitutional, it's unconstitutional under the state and federal law, okay? And public and, and safety law. There are, so we have the original law, the, uh, right to shelter law, Mr. Chairman, and under the right to shelter law, that originally didn't have to do with migrants, it had to do with US homeless citizens. And, and under that law, there's certain provisions. You have to follow the law. The governor can't, even in a state of emergency, which we know is a tactic, even in a state of emergency, the governor can't just do what she wants and, and make sure, and, and all of a sudden, a public safety law, she's going to put all the doors in a public restaurant the other way so they close inward, so then there's a fire and people die. You don't need Coconut Grove to know that it doesn't make sense. And, and the governor can't even declare, she could call out the National Guard, but she can't declare martial law without it being reviewed by the courts. And it's, it's unconstitutional. And then further, this program, which you, you pointed out, the, the request for responses, okay? It made sure that they had to be in compliance with all local bylaws. There's a reason for that, because they can't do it. So, Mr. Sullivan is right. You need to take this to court. I assume with the, and, and I, I don't know if you were properly in executive session if, uh, if, uh, there was no litigation, but I assume if you had your attorney there, uh, had the town attorney there, then that, that wasn't improper. So I won't file an open meeting law violation, but, uh, but, and, and the other reason I don't want to do it is because that's what you should be doing. You should be looking at what portions of the law are, are in, uh, in violation. The other, wearing my other hats, the reason I'm calling remotely is I had a Yarmouth Housing Authority meeting, okay? Um, and, you know, a lot of people think that, uh, we don't have any, the Yarmouth Housing Authority doesn't have any family housing. So there's no family housing, so the Yarmouth Housing Authority, and I'm speaking for myself, but these are just facts, okay? We have no family housing. We have senior housing, we have veterans housing, we have, uh, people who are, are, uh, need accessible housing. Um, Yarmouth Housing Authority doesn't have any preferences for emergency or homelessness. But the other law that you talked about, the school, and being on the school committee, and again, I'm not speaking for the school committee, I'm speaking for myself, but this is a fact, that the reason why the schools have to accept homeless, uh, children is the, the, the Federal McKinley-Vento Act. And that act says that the description of homeless is if they're living in cars, if they're living in hotels. So, in fact, when we put them in hotels to qualify for them to be in the schools, they have to be homeless, and living in a hotel is considered homeless. So you're actually unhousing them when you put them under this program to qualify for the federal, uh, uh, funds that go with the McKinley-Vento Act to the federal version of, uh, educating homeless children. So that's my point, Mr. Chairman, is however we got here, court action is the way to go. I, you know, I've heard a lot about communications, and the, and the town administrator is communicating constantly. Well, if it's bad communication, it's no communication as far as I'm concerned. And so what we need to do is, and I love the fact that you said we're going to have further meetings. We should have a great, big, general meeting, okay? We, we should get together with all the stakeholders in town, the, the housing authorities, the school committees, the, the teachers, the, the parents, um, all of these people should get together. We should have a thing that's going out on YouTube so everybody is known. Do a remote meeting, just like you're doing tonight, to let people, uh, speak. Uh, everybody in that room cares about the community. And I, and that includes the selectmen and, and the town administrator, but especially those people. And a lot of people don't know, the legislative body, going back to James Otis, is back with, is, is, the legislative body of the town of Yarmouth is town meeting, and that's where you voted those bylaws. So, uh, the final thing I'll leave you with, Mr. Chairman, is a quote that you know, and it's, so you don't give up. "Perseverance in spirit has done wonders in all ages." George Washington. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Joe. I'm going to go to this gentleman next.
You'll have to forgive me for my appearance, and, uh, if I stutter a little bit, it's been a long day, and I've been working outside in the rain all day. Um, I'm actually not from Yarmouth, I'm from Marston's Mills. My name is Andrew. Uh, I came here to support my fellow citizens and my fellow Americans, and I'm also here to represent myself, because whether I live in Marston's Mills or I live in Yarmouth, this still affects me, because whether the money for anything going forward comes out of the town of Yarmouth, or is reimbursed by the state, or is a grant from the federal government, it all comes from the people in this room. The federal government, the state of Massachusetts, the town of Yarmouth, all gets its tax money from this room and from other places. So whether or not it's directly...
Who do you people on this side of the desk?
Yes. And I, I heard a couple of people getting upset in the back there about, um, not wanting to pay for any of this. If, if they want to pay for it, then make it all voluntary, and they can fund it, and whoever doesn't want to fund it, won't. But there's an important difference between positive law and natural law. The crap being pushed is to make this stuff happen is positive law. It's not natural law. It's not the laws that our country was founded on, and there's no way in hell that our founding fathers would have gone along with any of this. What is happening is treason, and the, the previous gentleman was correct. This is treason.
It is.
It is a violation, a direct violation by the state of Massachusetts' own admission. These people are illegal foreign nationals. They can call them immigrants, migrants, whatever they want. They are foreign nationals. They are the citizens of foreign nations, and who the hell knows what nations, because none of it's being vetted, none of it's being documented. They're being trafficked en masse by a select political party who has an agenda, and it's being shoved down your throats, and it's being shoved down the people in this room's throats. And it's being dumped in your lap, and you're being told to deal with it, and that's after you find out that they've done it. After they've told you that this isn't going on. Migrants are not being bused around the, the country, they're not being flown around the country, and then they show up on your doorstep, and you're told to deal with it. Now, I would assume, and I could be wrong, and I'm sure there's any number of fine officers out here who can educate me on this, if I were to break the law right now, whether local law, state law, or federal law, I'd be willing to bet that they're not going to take me to a welcome center. I don't suspect that I'll be asked what my medical needs are or handed any free give outs other than a pair of coveralls. I believe somebody earlier made the statement that this is a complicated issue. I'll do my best to try to simplify it for you. Any money that... No, it's not. It's really not. Any money that has already been expended to address this issue or handed out should be paid back to the taxpayers out of the salaries of every single representative or individual involved who receives their salaries from the taxpayers. Let the refund for those things come out of their salaries until the expense is paid back, rather than you having to come up with more money to pay for it. Not only that...
What do you think the chances of that are?
Well, and here's the other thing. I've heard a lot of talk about regulations here, and I'm sure those are important, but I'm going to ask a very important question, and I've yet to get a good answer on this. And I want you to think about it, and you don't have to answer here. And I want you to think about it and you don't have to answer here, you can think about it on your own and come to your own answer for it, as can everybody else. If you go along with this, if this is allowed, if it's supported, if it's endorsed, whatever, by what moral or legal right will anybody ask the taxpayers and the citizens in this room to obey the law, to follow any regulation or any rule or pay any taxes? If you allow people who have knowingly violated federal immigration law, people who are supposed to work for us have aided and abetted in the commission of that crime and provided comfort and aid and protection and legal representation, who said people in violation of federal law? Then by what right will you ask anybody here? We need you to follow laws, we need you to follow zoning board regulations, we need you to pay your taxes, we need you not to speed, we need you not to cause trouble, we need you to renew your licenses on time. By what right? By what legal or moral right shall you say the rules shall apply for you, but when we decide it's important, we're gonna violate them? And you know what? Don't question us on it. Because that's what Moore Healy's done. That's what the Democrat Party has done. Chuck Schumer, in a press conference, said that we need to make these people legal citizens because, quote, "Americans are not reproducing like they should and we need the workers." By his own admission. He knows that they're violating the law, he knows that he took the Border Patrol guards off the border. They won't let ICE-
Okay, so these, these are, these are federal issues, they're beyond the scope of really what we're doing here tonight. And I have a lot of-
Within the scope of your issue, please don't interrupt me because I didn't interrupt you.
And I got a lot of people waiting, so I'm gonna give you 30 seconds to wrap it up. Go ahead.
What is in your purview is you can ask the law enforcement officers in this town to patrol and look for those buses. When they see them, contact ICE and have them come right down. Otherwise, I can't think of any reason, and I'm still waiting for an answer on it, why should anybody here pay taxes to the town of Yarmouth, to the state of Massachusetts, or to the federal government, or abide by any law if these people don't have to? And if you don't get a good answer, I would recommend that you look into getting a resolution together and revoke that tax money.
And it's out there.
En masse. And I'll bet you you'll get a real quick response then if they take away the tax money.
Thank you. Who, who, is there anyone next on the screen? Do we have anybody else on the screen?
Three hands up.
Three. Let's get them.
I think there's only two.
No, let's get Norm Holcomb. He's a former selectman. Let's see what he has to say.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Hey, Norm, speak up, please.
Uh, sure, I'll do the best I can. Uh, can you hear me now?
A little better.
All right, well, first of all, uh, thanks to, uh, you, Mike, and, and the rest of the board members and to our, uh, town administrator, uh, for everything you've done. I, I mean, this is way above and beyond anything you signed up for. And, uh, you know, this is, uh, but, but let's make an analogy to, uh, to what the state is doing here with this compared to what they did with COVID. The state totally screwed up the COVID, uh, response. Um, for, for weeks on end, people were, were trying to get, uh, access to COVID shots, couldn't do it because all the state sites were closed, they were shut down for one thing or another. The state had mumbled and bumbled their way through that issue. And they're doing the same thing with this. And they're laying it on the town, on, on our town and on many other towns, uh, in the state. And we have to stand up. I agree with Joe Glenn. I agree with some of the things that the, uh, speaker just before me said. We need to stand up. We have laws, we have zoning laws that we need to enforce. Just to make an analogy, this, this really is not a complicated issue. If you just look at, uh, having to enforce our laws, it's a very simple issue. Enforce the laws and everybody, everybody in our town will be happy. Take a, take a, um, a lesson from what, what happened in, uh, in Texas and Florida. They shipped out people that, uh, were in the country illegally and, and shipped them to other states. Well, why don't we ship these people? Because we don't have, um, um, legal places for them to stay. Why don't we ship those people to Boston? To the state house? So they can, uh, dwell there instead of in our, uh, in our town and, and consuming our tax dollars. It's gonna cost three quarters of a million dollars for these kids. Twenty-five thousand dollars a piece of 30 kids. That, that is easy, easy math. And that doesn't account for all the extra costs that are gonna be involved with, with all these people. But it's not a cost issue. It's a legal issue. And, you know, if, if someone arrives on my doorstep or, or camps out on my lawn, I call the police and I have them taken away. And I have a very right to do that. Well, the town is just an accumulation of single households. And we have the right to protect our property. The owner of that motel who agreed with the state to, to do something which is really illegal by town regulations, 30, 30-day maximum stays, he cannot agree to do that. He has no legal status. So the town needs to enforce our regulations, come down hard on it, get the people out of that motel, send them out because they're there not only illegally, but also the hotel owner is acting illegally.
Right. Take him in.
So, uh, you know, I don't, I don't think it's a matter of, oh gee, we need to take care of this person, that person, da, 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 da. We have to, uh, uh, find a way to enforce our laws and our regulations. And, and that is a very simple problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. Appreciate it. And, and just for the public, some of you may know Norm Holcomb, but he served on this board for about, I think, 11 years. Um, so who else do we have up there?
Rick M.
Is that a Rick, Rick M?
Good evening, Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for your time. Um, just wondering if the town of Yarmouth is being proactive, reaching out to the Commonwealth of Mass to get a list of all these hotels and motels who have agreed to take in illegals? There could be more coming that we don't know about. For example, I'll just throw one out. Has the Windriff Motel requested to house illegals? So I think the town should be proactive and try to get the information from the state who in the town has applied to take in illegals.
Good point.
Yeah, good point.
Is he done?
I think we're done, Rob.
Is that it, Rick?
Yeah, that's it.
Ah, yes, sir. Yep.
All right, thank you.
All right, is there anybody out here that, that's, that I haven't called on? Raise your hand if you wanna speak. Gentlemen in the back. And then, you already spoke, didn't you?
I'm practicing a lawyer.
You gotta go to law school first. You gotta get in.
I gotta practice somewhere.
You know, it's gonna take you 10 years to probably get past the entrance exam, but go ahead.
I guess. Good evening, everyone. Rafael Gutierrez, Yarmouth Port. I'll be very quick. It's a matter of reiterating a couple of very important points. I, I appreciate all the professionalism and all the work you all have done in, in working with the state government. Uh, the one thing, again, just kind of connecting a few dots that were already made earlier. Uh, the state is executing their plan. They're gonna push these folks out to wherever they can. Okay? Somehow the folks on Martha's Vineyard flipped those folks out there in a week's time. I think you all are being very kind, very generous, and very professional in the way you're communicating with the state, with the state. You've got the gloves on, they don't. Okay? So somehow, again, tying back to the George Washington point, a few of the other points, I think we're gonna have to get to a point where this group here wants, A, stop any more coming in, B, how do we play hardball, bare-knuckled-fisted with the state and litigate or stop any more from coming in until we address what we have right now? Okay? I don't think the folks in the, in the, folks in, in the vineyard are any smarter than we are or any smarter than you are. They figured out how to flip those folks in a week's time. Okay? Okay, so, so the other thing, and thank you for pointing that out. So I'm not a good public speaker, so I'll, I'm kinda bouncing around.
Oh, you're doing fine.
So here's the other thing. I'm sure aspects of this meeting will get out into social media and many of us are gonna be painted as anti-immigrant, racist, and every other slander that's gonna be out there, okay? So, well, it, it does matter because nobody in here is a racist. And no one in here is anti-legal immigration.
Amen.
My parents came over here from another country.
I'm the grandson of an immigrant.
My parents were in line, we all were. My parents were in line for six and seven years respectively to get their citizenship.
I hear you.
The narrative that the, that the immigration process is broken is a, is a false narrative. Okay? There are laws in place, codes, standards, bylaws, immigration laws, that we all have to follow. If we, if we, if we don't, as someone mentioned earlier, then there's anarchy. If we don't, we're lawbreakers. If we don't, we're uncivilized. Okay? And, and I think everyone here is polite, professional, and civilized, which is very conscious of what could happen if we allow this to progress any further. And I get it, they're human beings. Okay? But our concern is the citizens and the human beings of Yarmouth Port, Yarmouth First, that have needs, as was mentioned earlier. We get a shortage of housing on the Cape for the folks that are breaking their backs every day, every morning, that are cooking our food, fixing our cars, building our houses, okay, working at Home Depot, working at Dunkin' Donuts, and need a place to live. And the perception that these folks are gonna come here and elbow them out of the way and move to the front of the line?
Right. It's wrong.
That's wrong. It's un-American.
It is.
Okay?
I agree.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna go to this lady in the front row. Yes, you?
Thank you.
Dennis wouldn't let this go.
Hello, my name is Diane. I'm from West Yarmouth. I live on Boxbury Lane. I've been here for 42 years. Um, I've watched this town, um, go down. I love this town. This is our town and we are not gonna stand by and we are not gonna let this happen. You, every single one of you up there are our heroes. We depend on you. We rely on you every single day. You have got to take action immediately, every single one of you. We are doing what we can by coming here tonight. You can see how frustrated and angry we are. We are coming here to let you know this, that you have got to be our heroes every day. Take care of this problem, please, before it gets out of hand. There are a lot of angry people. Thank you.
Thank you. You should know that that level of frustration applies to us as well. I mean, this, this came out of, I won't even say left field because it's even a lot worse than that. Came out of another planet. There's no precedent for anything like this. We've never encountered anything like this. And in addition, we still gotta do the normal business of the town, which, aside from this problem, is an enormous responsibility. So we're doing everything that we can and we're meeting with town council. We're gonna meet again with him in two weeks. We can't next week because the meeting's gonna be devoted to interview of three candidates for finance director. It's gonna take the whole night.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
This is more important.
No.
I think we need to move on this part. This is a little bit important.
Everything's important. How long we been looking for a finance director?
It doesn't matter. We don't care about that.
You don't care about it? We do, we do, we do because the finance director is a, is a key person.
Listen, excuse me.
But, no ma'am, sit down, sit down.
Yes, sir.
Don't, don't, please don't tempt me. I said everybody would get a chance to speak. I said nobody would interrupt the other person. I said we will proceed orderly and that's the way we're gonna do it. I don't believe in, you know, out of control meetings or anything like that, so be respectful. Listen when someone else is speaking and when you get recognized, you get a turn to speak. Everything's important in this town. Our schools are important, our police are important, our firemen are important, our recreation people are important, everything is. We don't just push everything aside because of this. We have to integrate this into everything else we do. And we're doing it. So we're gonna do that and then the next week, um, we're gonna meet with council again. In the meantime, he's gonna send us, members of the board, some written materials to review based on our discussions tonight. And we keep it all options open. We can't reveal litigation strategy. That would be like talking to the other side, letting them into our private communications with our attorney. Only a fool would do something like that. So that's where we stand. Who else? Yes, ma'am. And then the law school applicant, I'll give you the last word. Go ahead.
My name is Heather Swenson and I'm actually from Sunnyvale. I'm not a Yarmouth resident. Um, I just wanted to ask, so where are your state reps for your area? And so on Friday, September 8th, 8:30, it says was your original posting of your agenda. Uh, it says it was amended on Monday, September 11th. So I just found out about this at noon today and here I am. So my question would be, where are your state reps to come and sit and listen to what all of you folks have to say? And did you all invite them when you made that amendment? I'm going to assume the amendment on Monday was to add-
The amendment only dealt with executive session.
So on Friday-
To put their property address in.
So on Friday, so then if the original, if this is, the original was posted on Friday at 8:30 AM-
Yep.
How was Yarmouth Resort migrant housing update consideration of draft correspondence to the governor already on your agenda?
Right, but that's not the executive session.
No, I know that, but what I'm saying is if your agenda was written at 8:30 in the morning on Friday-
Correct.
So on Friday at 8:30 in the morning, you already knew about the housing issue that was taking place in the hotel. But you said you got a text-
Which housing issue?
It's the, the Yarmouth Resorts.
The Yarmouth Resort migrant housing was already an issue?
Isn't the one I referred to when I said over the weekend, that was a different motel. That's the one across the pancake man. What is it, Harborview?
Okay.
Harbor Side.
Okay. Then my only point would be-
So Friday night is when I got the text from our town administrator that he received from one of our state reps that people were coming to the Harbor Side either Saturday morning or Saturday evening, not the motel that's in the executive session.
But as of Friday, you still knew that there were issues that were taking place here in Yarmouth? And I would hope that you would have reached out to your reps and let them know that you would be having a meeting and maybe they should attend to hear from all of you folks.
Representative Exaros, he doesn't represent this district-
I know, I saw him.
But he was here tonight. Um, the other representatives, they can come in here anytime.
They didn't even say a word.
I will let you know, yesterday I attended a 9/11 memorial service in the town of Barnstable. I walked down Route 6H to go to a memorial service at a church and I happened to be walking behind Kip Diggs. And I can guarantee you, he does not have your back when it comes to, when it comes to this situation, because I overheard his conversation.
But our former chief, Frank Fredrickson, led the pack, didn't he?
Yes, he did. It was a beautiful service.
That's because he worked here. Okay, the law school candidate will wrap this up for us.
Craig Williams, I am a resident. I've been a resident for 62-
I've been a resident for 62 years. That's all of my years. And I want to be like the vineyard. I can't afford to live there. I live in Yarmouth. I want to be like the vineyard. Send the bus down, put them on, let's send them out. What are they going to do? Put you in jail? I'll take up, we'll take up an account, I'll pay the bail. They're not going to put you in jail. Send them out.
I want to see the bail money in escrow, cash.
I'm sure we can put it together.
Hockey's cheap. I want to see the green.
And they spend in $60 million a month? That sounds like a down payment on the bridges. They can find the money to pay $60, $60 million a month?
They say $45 mil a month, but I think that's probably a conservative number.
I want to be like the vineyard, please. Just pull them up tight, get the bus down there, send them out.
All right.
Please, please.
No. Mr. Forrest wants to respond to that.
No, we're very familiar with what happened on the vineyard. All right? The migrants, the aliens that came to the vineyard were taken to the base, not because the vineyarders kicked them out. They were taken there because a previous governor set up a facility at the base to handle this. Now, one of the recommendations that we have sent to our representatives is to create a very similar type of operation out at Joint Base Cape Cod. Some of you may remember Governor Mitt Romney. When he was governor, he set up a series of facilities to deal with refugees from the Gulf Coast. And during this time period, 2005, they basically made available facilities at military bases in Massachusetts. And these facilities did not interfere with military operations. They were set up basically to be staging areas where they could welcome refugees from the Gulf Coast. Now, out at Camp Edwards, out at Otis, they were set up to handle 2,500 people. They were set up, back then, 2,500 people. I went out there and actually toured the facility. It was an incredibly well-managed, very smooth operation. All of, a variety of state and local and federal agencies were there to provide services to people there onsite, healthcare services, vaccination services, a whole range of services. And they were going to be there for a period of time and then eventually move on, either go back to the Gulf Coast or go to some other area. Governor Romney called it Operation Helping Hand. But the point I'm getting at, the point I'm getting at is, is they had a plan. It was well-coordinated. It involved the federal and state governments. And so when we look at the situation in the vineyard, there was an attempt to basically manage that particular situation in a very similar way. All right? There's no reason why, at least in my judgment, we can't be doing something that's as well-coordinated and well-managed today. All right? But for whatever reason, there's resistance to doing this. And it may have something to do with politics. It may have reasons, it certainly has reasons that we're not aware of. But that's one of many suggestions that we have made and made available, you know, to our state officials and folks in the governor's office, along with a host of other things that we have communicated. So it's important to understand that as much as, I mean, we hear you do what the vineyard did. What the vineyard did was rely on a very aggressive state effort to take those individuals and bring them to a place where they could be cared for. And that's not, they weren't kicked off the vineyard. This is a very different situation than what's being portrayed tonight. So I just want to get that point across. But I understand your message. You're clearly expressing a frustration that, as the chairman and others have said, is very much shared by the board. But your point's well-taken. Thank you.
Before we conclude this, Bob, do you have any comments that you'd like to make?
No, I would just underscore that, you know, the town was completely blindsided by this news. And we reacted immediately. And I would say, people say, what's the town's stance? You know, as a community, we don't have a stance on the national politics or the immigration, you know, that's at a federal level. What we're concerned about, and I think that the community and the town and the Board of Selectmen have taken a very strong stance. And a few people have pointed to it this evening, is we have a rule of law in our community. We have the regulations in place. And, you know, we are seeking to enforce those to the full extent that we're allowed to by law. And it's complicated because municipal governments are supposed to be the creatures of the state. But we do have our own self-governance, and we're following through on that. And the discussions with the attorneys, I mean, you need to know the enforcement process has already started, and the state has been made aware that there are local zoning, land use regulations that do not allow the program, in our view, to be carried out in the way that they plan it. And what needs to be determined is the end result of that process. But the town has been very clear since the first moment that we were informed that, you know, we made it absolutely clear that the facility that they had selected was under violation already. That facility has received a cease and desist notice, and that future facilities will also come across the same problems. So we're looking after the local regulations and the laws. It's a very difficult situation when it's the state that is creating the problem. But I think everyone in the town government is standing up for the local, town of Yarmouth, bylaws, issues. And if this is done, it should be done in accordance with our local laws. And the Commonwealth has stated in their material, as it was pointed out this evening, that they intended to do that. And we've asked them specifically, I've asked in writing, please explain the zoning issues in your mind. Why is it not part of your thinking? So those are issues that we're trying to resolve. But don't think that it's passivity or that the town has waited, the town has waited on this and will continue to. And so I just would say that. Know that we are looking after the local impacts here in the town. And, you know, we appreciate the feedback, the input, and also the continued participation. And we've tried to take every scrap of information that we've received from the state, which has been painfully little, and try to put it out there for the public. We were the ones that found out about the Harbor Side Suites and released that information immediately. And we've also, you know, gone toe-to-toe on, you know, with the state on some of these issues. We have not received a response that I feel is appropriate to date, but we're hopeful that we will.
Two things. One is Maureen Tuohy Bedford has alerted me that she's had her hand up. Can you locate her on the screen? Anybody see her?
She's up now.
Maureen, can you hear me?
I can. I hope you have filters to, like, take 10 pounds off. Yes, thank you for taking my call. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I want to thank you all on the select board and our police and our fire for listening to your community. Everyone, including yourselves, is frustrated. We cannot solve the illegal immigration problem here, but we can try to address what is happening here and now. Since we really have no infrastructure, there's no plan, there's no vetting, there's no background check, there's no query, no sorry. You know, my own feeling is that any state that's in a state of emergency cannot solve that problem by pushing the problem to a town that's already in its own state of emergency. We here in Yarmouth and the Cape in general, we already have our own human beings right here in town who are poor, low-income, homeless. We have our own overflowing food pantries. And the biggie for me would be the number of federal free and reduced lunch numbers. It's sky-high. I'm from New York and New Jersey. I've seen what's happened down there, and it's a disaster. And the way that the Rockland Hotels handled it in Orangeburg is exactly what Tom Sullivan and Joe Glenn said. They filed a restraining order, a temporary restraining order, and they have filed an injunction to shut down a couple of the hotels in Orangeburg to illegals living there. So I appreciate you taking the time to let us all vent our frustrations. It's greatly appreciated. It's as frustrating for us as it is for you. So I just, that's all I had to say. I appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you, Maureen.
Thank you.
This lady in the back wanted to speak, and, go ahead.
I just want to say that Representative Exaros is online. I would like to speak.
He's online?
He's on your Zoom.
Steve Exer, you with us? We'll get him. Yeah, he was here in person earlier.
Do you see him, Bob?
No, I, there's...
Reps.
Okay.
Steve, can you hear me?
Here we go, I think. Can you hear me now, folks?
Yeah.
All right.
What happened to you? I saw you hanging around earlier.
Yes.
You weren't down at Dairy Queen with the chief, were you?
I wish. Is it okay if I say a few words?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I appreciate you doing what you're doing. I was out front with the people, and then I came inside and saw you. And now I'm back home. I've been watching for the last five minutes. What you said in person when I was there, I agree with. And what you were saying in the last few minutes, I heard the town administrator speak. He should be given a lot of credit. Because all the questions that you have, we have too, as state representatives. And communication needs to improve. And my biggest question and concern is, how can we not follow the motel license law, which is defined as a state law of what a motel is, which is for transient use only? And then your local descriptions of that, which limit it to a certain amount of days? And you, as a town, have put that in black and white. And I commend you for that, because I think more towns need to to ask these questions and get answers. Me, as a state official, you know, I don't represent Yarmouth, but I love Yarmouth. You know, that's where, you know, I worked for 40 years, serving and protecting. You know, you're all my friends and family. So I'm doing the best I can to represent on the state level. In my opinion, these are the things we need to do. One, we need federal people to close the border. We need Congress to fix the immigration laws, which is federal issues. And, you know, we need to do that as soon as possible. But statewide, I would ask the governor to stop what's going on. We want to see a plan, like, an emergency plan in writing. We haven't been able to see that. Today, I co-signed a bill that we created to repeal or reform the right-to-shelter law, which you all know was written in, I believe, 1983, and probably intended on, you know, helping Massachusetts residents when they were going through tough times. I don't think the intention was to house people from all over the world. So we filed a bill on that to repeal it or reform it. That's important. And soon, I'll be filing a bill that basically says, if you're going to do this, not only do we need a plan, and you need to follow the local rules, but the state should reimburse the towns for the cost that's going to happen. No one, I don't think, has a, we all have hearts and we care, but this is overwhelming to the towns. Not only, you know, with schools and public safety, but even environmentally. How is this all going to work? So those are my thoughts. I wanted to say, you know, see it in person, but I hope you could hear me. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay. Well, your input's very much appreciated. I think the involvement of state representatives throughout the Commonwealth are going to be very important to try to bring a sensible resolution to this problem legislatively. That's obviously beyond our powers. We can try to speak to and through our state reps. But you guys are the ones really that have, you in the Senate, the ultimate power within your grasp to bring upon some meaningful change to a statute, I think, that invites an overload of migrants to the state. And I appreciate, you know, your input and your efforts in the legislature.
Thank you, sir.
Does anyone have any question or comment for Steve? Okay. All right, so we're going to move on. You can stay. You're welcome to stay. We're going to discuss a letter, a draft letter that we have next. And like I said, this isn't going to be the only time this is on our agenda. I think this is going to be an ongoing situation. Whoever made the suggestion of devoting a place on our website for information pertaining to this issue, I think was a very good suggestion. There was a lot of good suggestions, but that one in particular would be a good way of keeping people informed. And we'll talk to our IT department and see if we can't set up something like that.
Mr. Chairman, they're already working on it. I just was out in the hall talking to the IT director, and they're already started work on it, so.
Beautiful.
And Mr. Chairman, I would ask if all of you are following the town of Yarmouth website. If you aren't, when you go home for Facebook, you should go on and check off that you want to follow, because then you'll be getting this information as it comes out from the town.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on this letter that we have before us to the governor, and which will go to all our elected state representatives.
Could I ask you a favor of you before you make your motion? Could you, for the record, read the letter? Would you mind doing that?
I would be more than happy to do that. The letter is addressed to the governor, and it says, "The Board of Selectmen of the Town of Yarmouth expresses its strongest concerns with the possible selection of the Yarmouth Resort Motel property as a possible site for emergency migrant housing. This property has become a nuisance to the town that it is the site of numerous alleged zoning violations which predate the current proposal. And the property does not possess an active certificate of occupancy. The owners of this property have received two separate notices of violation, and the lack of responses thereto has forced the town to contemplate litigation to enforce the building and zoning requirements applicable for this property. Based on the failure to receive an acceptable annual inspection, a prerequisite for the property receiving a certificate of occupancy, as well as the lack of compliance with the Yarmouth zoning bylaws and applicable zoning Board of Appeals decisions, the property is currently under a cease and desist order, which prevents the proposed use of the facility for housing programs of any kind. The specific zoning violations of greatest concern to the town include tenancy at the motel that exceeds the transient limits imposed by the Yarmouth zoning bylaws applicable to all motels. In addition, the property has allegedly been used for seasonal employee housing without application for a temporary seasonal housing permit, also required by the Yarmouth zoning bylaw. Other critical concerns involve the alleged failure of the owner to comply with the requirements of the ZBA special permit issued for the property with respect to the management... issued for the property with respect to the management and operation of the facility. The property owners have engaged in a pattern of behavior that is entirely unresponsive to local code enforcement efforts. The behavior not only jeopardizes the health and safety of occupants of the facility, but also creates uneven conditions for the many other lodging facilities operating within the boundaries of special permits and the zoning codes of the town of Yarmouth, providing an atmosphere of lawlessness and lack of concern for safety. The town stands ready to use all legal means to enforce its local bylaws and the state building code. We are certainly hopeful that a state contract is not issued to this property, which will both reward the past pattern of blatant violations and create an infectious and intolerable precedent. We hasten to point out that in the request for responses, the RFR issued on April 13th, 2023, by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for emergency assistance hotel motel services, it specifically provides in part that DHCD, this is the state agency overseeing this program, is seeking respondents who can provide as minimum, quote, hotel motel or other lodging rooms for up to one year that comply with all applicable local, state and federal statutes, laws, bylaws and regulations, including but not limiting to applicable zoning codes, building codes, health codes and occupancy. It is clear in this case that this property has failed to meet the minimum criteria for participating in this program. And for all the reasons stated herein, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Yarmouth strenuously urges your office to eliminate this property from further consideration for the migrant housing project. Thank you for your attention to this most urgent matter. Signed, Yarmouth Board of Selectmen."
Isn't it closed down? Why, why isn't it not closed down if it has all these violations?
Well, let me, let me, let me, let me try to answer what I can because I can't give you all the information because a lot of it's with attorney-client. There's a process that you have to go through to proceed against anybody, any person, any business, any property. And certain notices have to be given, which have been given. There are appeal periods you have to wait because the party has a right to appeal your notice to the zoning board of appeals. And only after that appeal period expires can you resort to take legal action. So the notice part of it is in process. Whether or not they will appeal remains to be seen. Upon expiration of the appeal period, then Yarmouth can proceed further. You can't, you can't just walk in and, and shut a business down without going through a court process. And you can't just walk into court the next day without giving certain statutory notices. It's like, almost like something you'd be more familiar with, a landlord-tenant case. You can't just walk up to court and say, "I want to evict this tenant." There's certain notices you must give them first, certain time periods that have to go by before you can resort to the courts.
When was that first notice issued?
It was in late August.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion on the floor and I'd like a second.
That's right, you do.
And I'd second that motion.
Anybody have a second? Okay, let me, let me dispense with this. Is Peter still with us?
I think Peter left.
Is Peter Q. Smith still with us?
I don't think he is.
No, I guess Peter has absented himself. All right, so we'll do a roll call vote.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question. I, I think the sentiments of the letter are very appropriate. I think they're too limited, frankly. This is a bit of like guacamole. The state's already gone around the Yarmouth Resort and now has migrants in the harbor side. So this is very good, but it's directed at one property. I don't think it fully expresses our concerns with the generalized use of motels for housing. So whether we send a second letter or revamp this one, I think, you know, the generalized use of Yarmouth motels has to be addressed and not just this problem property.
I think in terms of the second motel, there's no violation yet because there's no 60, 30-day occupancy. So, and I don't wanna, this is just my view. I'll do whatever the rest of you want to do. But I don't want to really wait on getting something on the fly to the governor's office. So when the 30 days runs out, then we could send a second letter addressing that. Or if you want and you want to amend this letter, the problem's gonna be with our meeting schedule. This probably isn't gonna get out for a couple of weeks.
Send it.
Enough snail mail.
Send it.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to respond. I mean, I, I appreciate Selectman Horgan's concern. I just think it's critical that we get this out and get a, a formal, very strong statement about what's been going on. I think we've, we've heard enough. I think folks are anxious for us to take action tonight. And this is a very appropriate step. To wait until we actually have documented violations involving other properties is just, is, is, is just time we can't afford.
May I also say, Mr. Chairman, that I, I agree with what Selectman Forrest has just said. But also, I think we have a good opportunity when it has, when they have used their 30 days of occupancy at Harborview to come into another letter that's very much more specific to then mentioning what the zoning laws are in town and that this is not only impacting this hotel, but every hotel in town. This, these are like two separate issues, as I see it.
Well, and, and yeah, for the benefit of the audience and those that may be watching, and I think you know this, but I want to make it clear. These regulations aren't limited to one motel. They're universal. They apply to every motel in town. I think you probably understand that, but I just want to make sure. But Dan, your point's well taken. I don't have a problem with anything you're saying. I just, I just don't know that the lay's in our best interest. I, I mean, we can, we can fire out another one real quick and we could start working on it, just to have it ready to, to go. What I think you folks should do to really start understanding the gravity of the legal situation is you should start monitoring Dennis with Eagle Pond. Because you're gonna come across, and it, we don't have time to get into it tonight. I'm a lawyer. I love to talk a lot. I'll talk a lot to you 24 hours a day. But I don't think the rest of the board is on the same, same wavelength with me there. But that Eagle Pond Nursing Home is predicated on something they call the Dover Amendment. You really want to look into that. Because it shows you the possibilities that are open to the state in a situation like this. And there's a, I just, and you could start getting, they're public records. You could start requesting the public records from the town of Dennis. The Dover Amendment allows governments to, and, and nonprofits to really reach, to get people in the housing situations. There's a statute which, which says if it's primarily an educational use, then the housing component kind of piggybacks that and, and by, and supersedes conventional zoning regulations. It's very complicated. But in Dennis, the petitioner in that case isn't the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It's HAC, H-A-C, the housing, what is it, what's the acronym?
Housing Assistance.
Housing Assistance Corp., thank you. And so what they're doing in Dennis is they're claiming that the primary use is educational. So they're gonna take this population and they, you're gonna laugh at this, but it's true. They're gonna teach them how to send their kids to school in the morning. They're gonna teach them how to, how to write an email. They're gonna teach them how to file a job application, for example. And then they say the residential component is really in furtherance of the educational component. And there's a law that really protects them. Expect to hear about the Dover Amendment. And that's a potential strategy you may see the state using. They're, they're clearly using it in the town of Dennis. And so monitor that case in and itself. You're gonna get quite an education on ways to get around zoning in housing situations. It's just beyond the scope of, it would take me probably, to explain it to you in depth, probably a good hour anyway. But watch that case carefully. Yes, sir.
If you guys can't go after the hotels for the 30-day overstate, what happens to those people if the hotel doesn't tell them to get off? You can't go over there and physically remove them?
No, you have to go through court.
But that, that is a quick process when you go to evict them.
They call what you're talking self-help and it's illegal. And it's also illegal in your conventional landlord-tenant situation. You can't just go over and physically expel a tenant without going through the court process. And even when you get a court order against a tenant, the sheriff's gotta remove them. You can't. So, same, same, same thing. We, we have to, we have to deal within the legal framework. You just can't, you go outside it and the court will throw your, your case right out of court. You can't. You gotta, I mean, courts are a system of laws that.
Aren't they tenants?
We don't always like, but that's the playing field. That's what we gotta deal with.
Aren't they tenants at will? Because they don't have a lease.
They're not even tenants. They're not even tenants. They're not even paying. The state, the state, the state's paying the, the state's paying the motel. I guess they're guests of the Commonwealth. I don't know what the hell they are, but they're not tenants.
My guess.
A tenant, there's a landlord-tenant relationship. That's not there. But I want you to take this away. There's no relationship with what's going on with the town of Yarmouth. It's all between the state and the property owners. And we have zero input into that. None. I hope everybody understands that because I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about that. And we are on it. We're doing the best we can with it. And we'll, you know, the knowledge is power. We're gonna try to find out more and more and more. Town administrator and I talked about trying to get something that I think would be very revealing, records from the Commonwealth about what establishments have responded to their requests for proposals. So we know, we'll get a sense maybe at least of, of what we can expect.
Who's, who's keeping track of the 30-day meter over at the Brentwood?
We are.
Okay.
Very easy. They came in Sunday, so start counting on Monday.
Okay.
You always count on legal notice. The next day is your first day.
Okay.
If you get a list, we can protest.
And by the way, I, I just, this is my own comment. We really appreciate what you're doing. I think it is meaningful. I think it does make a difference. You certainly have the right to do that under the First Amendment. I applaud your efforts. I know it takes time. I know it takes dedication, organization. And I certainly am in full support of that. The only thing I do, do want to say is, when you get disruption, it really takes away from the message you're trying to send. It really, truly does. It hurts your cause. It doesn't help it at all. When you stay on the high road, you're more effective.
Let's take a vote.
Yes, I just wanted.
So you would say then that we need to stop the illegals from coming here before they get here? Are we, within the law, as a group of protesters, are we within the law to go to the Sagamore Bridge and the Barn Bridge and form a human line and not let the buses come?
Okay, so.
You can do all you want. It's been done.
So I've heard, I've heard of that. That's called civil disobedience. To make a long story short, can you do that? You can do it, but you gotta pay the legal price. You'll be arrested and you'll go to court. But that, that's what civil disobedience is. That's what Martin Luther King did. He violated the segregation laws. But he stood there and he was arrested and he was beaten and he was taken to jail. But that caused a lot of national attention to his issue. That's what civil disobedience is. So I'm not certainly gonna go there. As a lawyer, I can advise people to break the law, even if in my heart of hearts I think it's a good idea. I can't, I can't advise people to break the law. But in civil disobedience, you gotta pay the dues. You break the law, you pay the consequences and that's how you bring attention to your efforts. But I, I've said enough. We're gonna have a vote on this. Mark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dan. Dorcas.
Aye.
I vote aye too. So that's unanimous. So that letter will go. We, we're done with this segment. We start back. We missed the proclamation. Dan, do you want to do the?
Thank you.
Please don't.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Well, I'm sure we'll see you again.
I hope so.
And if I stop to talk to you during one of your protests, don't throw anything at me and don't run me over. All right. Extra large, please.
You like navy blue?
I love navy blue. It's my favorite color. Where's the orig, here it is. Here's the original proclamation. You want to do this one, Dan? The proclamation?
Yes, we only just read it.
Yeah. When we start, when we get organized here. I'll, I'll introduce it. And then you, if you can read it. I think people are tired of hearing my voice. The next one is the alcohol thing's a continuance. The next one, the fire's a continuance. So then we're gonna go straight into the airport and then the tax classification, which would be pretty simple. But we still got quite a bit of stuff. Is he?
The proclamation.
No, we got a proclamation. And then we got, we're gonna do the two continuances and then we'll get to the airport. The continuances will take about a minute apiece. So this is suicide prevention month. And so what the board has done is we have a proclamation acknowledging the importance of suicide prevention and selectmen. All the selectmen are signing it. And we're gonna have it read into the record by Selectman Dan Horgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a proclamation to proclaim the National Suicide Prevention and Action Month. Whereas with September being recognized as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month at Cape and Islands, Suicide Prevention Coalition invites our communities, mental health advocates, prevention organizations, survivors and affiliates to join us in helping to de-stigmatize mental health and to take proactive action towards suicide prevention. We seek to raise awareness and visibility of mental health and suicide prevention resources in our communities and to help connect individuals with the appropriate support services. And whereas according to the American Foundation of Suicide Prevention, suicide is the second-leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 10 and 34, with more than 48,000 people dying by suicide annually in the United States. And whereas with an average of 132 suicide deaths daily and each one directly impacting 100 additional people, including friends, service members, family, social media. 100 additional people, including friends, service members, family, social media connections, and neighbors, we know a significant number of individuals have impacted by suicide. And whereas Barnstable County's suicide rate is 1.5 times higher, standing at 14.2% per 100,000 versus the Commonwealth of Massachusetts rate at 9.5 per 100,000, we recognize the need to create hope through action locally. And whereas our local Cape and Island Suicide Prevention Coalition works hard to spread the word about prevention, awareness, education, and action, and whereas the town of Yarmouth, Barnstable County, Massachusetts publicly places its full support behind those who work in the field of mental health and education and law enforcement, and whereas we encourage all residents to take time to understand mental health through education and recognize that we need to take care of our mental health while we take care of one another. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2023 as National Suicide Prevention and Action Month in the town of Yarmouth.
Thank you, Dan, much appreciated. Every member of the board has, as I said, endorsed that proclamation and have individually signed it. Very important message, and I appreciate you reading that into the record, Dan. The next item is a matter that came before us before, beyond the bounds, 2023 season closure at Seago Beach. They withdrew the special alcohol application, and all that remains of their initial filing is an entertainment license. We gave them a continuance because there were certain notices that weren't served, and I have to inform you again that they still weren't served. So they need a further continuance. Now, they're going to have to fish or cut bait, because if they don't serve the notices and this matter is not approved by the proposed continuation date of September 26th, it'll be too late for them to have their event. So what I do, what I would like is a motion to further continue this matter to September 26, 2023.
So moved.
Second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So that passes by a vote of three to zero. The next item, we don't really need a vote on. It was a fire department recent hires and promotions. It was going to be an event where the firefighters brought their families and their children for individual recognition, and we decided that based on the expected climate of the night, it being a family event, we'd be better off putting it on for another date. So we were discussing, what, two weeks from tonight for that?
26th.
Putting it over, but we don't have to, we don't have to continue it. We just put it on the agenda for that time.
Correct.
So now we are ready for the second main event. Hopefully a lot quieter, more subdued presentation. So we have the airport community meeting with consultant. Do you want to make the introduction on that, Dan? Hi, Dan. Bob?
Yes, certainly. And again, I welcome Ron Price here from QED Airport and Aviation Consultants. We've done a tremendous amount of work since the master plan for the airport was, was published and proposed, and most recently, we've been completely invested in the environmental assessment portion of that program, where the town has been given a voice through the process, through the MEPA process, to bring all of our concerns to bear. And we've had a number of public meetings. I want to salute, I think, the most active community organization assisting us has been the Hyannis Park Civic Association, and all of that input has been fed into the process. And Mr. Price is here to give us an update, an update for the whole community, and I think he's going to talk a little bit about, you know, one of the reasons why I think the room's not full tonight. Folks knew what, you know, we would be facing in terms of having a crowded meeting room, and also, we took the step of arranging previously to go out into the neighborhood and meet with the Hyannis Park Civic Association, which we did this afternoon, and make this full presentation and have their input, feedback. And I want to thank Chris Greeley, who opened up her home to us and allowed us to come in and make that presentation, and Linda Ballinger, the president, and all of the members that were there. We had, I thought, a great discussion, and we, I think, had a great deal of consensus on some of the next steps. So without further ado, I want to, and by the way, I forgot to mention this, it was Ron Price's idea to go out in the neighborhood and meet directly with the folks that had given us so much input. And when he suggested that, I just thought it was the greatest idea, so...
They have like a screen and everything?
Oh, yeah, I brought the projector and the laptop. We had it up just that big, right on the wall, and...
That's a doubleheader for you.
Yeah, hopefully I learned from the first one.
Okay, Ron, you're on.
Well, okay. Hopefully this will be less contentious.
I'm sure it will be.
Good news for you.
No, don't say that.
Sure it will be.
Don't say that.
Okay, so, thank you, Town Administrator, Mr. Woodmore. Introducing me, it's been a great pleasure working with, with Rob.
Bob.
And, sorry, and it's been a great, really great project for me, and it may not be over. So I've got some other ideas for you, but today we're going to talk about where we were then, when I started, where we are now, and what we might be doing next, okay? So hopefully I'll figure this out. Where have we been? You may recall that the, the airport had proposed what we consider an ambitious program to improve the facilities at the airport.
Could you use a microphone, please?
Oh, gee.
Thank you so much.
Can I sit? It'll be okay?
Yes, it may, yeah. I think, I think it'd be better for you to do that.
Again, so you may recall that the airport had proposed an ambitious, we call, program to improve their facilities.
Uh huh.
And one of the biggest issues that they were facing was the length of their runway, which is, this is what we focused on in our, in our work. And now the need for that runway was real, runway length was really spurred by the Northeast Alliance between, the proposed Northeast Alliance between JetBlue and American Airlines, which now is no longer going to happen, but that was the time, at the time. So they put together their master plan, they finished in 2022, but we had an opportunity to comment on the plan directly with them. We've attended the meetings, we wrote letters to them through, to the airport administrator, and we suggested that we want to focus on the runway length, because that was the big issue for the community, was noise, aircraft noise. So when I reviewed the work that was done by their consultant, I found some misinterpretations of how to do it. And so I suggested that they take a look at it again, but I gave them my own analysis of what I thought the runway length should be to handle the future anticipated aircrafts that would be using the facility. That includes air carrier type aircraft, like what JetBlue operates, or what they were proposing to operate, at least under the Northeast Alliance proposals, and the business jets, because those are the aircraft that tend to need a longer runway length. And we also recommended that they have a voluntary noise abatement program that they have all the pilots try to learn and implement. It's great, it's on paper, there's no pictures. We thought, why don't you put a graphic to the words, because pilots will understand it better than just reading it. So hopefully they're in the process of doing that, but I'll tell you about that in a second. And by the way, if you have a question, just ask, okay? So this was their master plan recommendations. They went through a number of alternatives, had a length of the runway, they started with 6,950 feet. If I, if you see the areas in yellow, those are displaced thresholds. I mean, that's the extension, but you, they're landing in about the same place where they are today, under their proposals. They're going to lengthen the runway. Are you familiar with the term displaced threshold? Okay. A displaced, if you have a runway length this long, and you have some obstructions off of this end, and you want the planes to be clear when they're coming in, you move the landing threshold inward. That's a displaced threshold. So you land at that point, but you can take off from this point. So you have the full length of the runway to take off, but you have a shorter runway length to land. And normally aircraft need less runway length to land than they need to take off, because they're operating much lighter. So they went through a number of alternatives, and they recommended, and this is the one we objected to, is 6,550 feet with an extension. Extension to the, that's runway 15 on the left side. That's the runway that heads southeast, okay? So they have recommended that the runway length, in the master plan, be 6,550 feet long. They're going to put a extension of 890 feet on the 15 end, the opposite end is runway 33. 15, 33, difference of 18. Where's your compass? We round, we take the zero off the numbers, okay? One, are you following this? I'm trying to talk quickly so you'll, you spend a lot of time with the other issues. So, all right, so here we have, there, that was the master plan recommendation. However, based on our comments to them, they've modified that as they went into the environmental assessment. So the master plan is complete. Now they're doing the environmental assessment that will clear, hopefully for them, the ability to move forward and implement some of these recommendations in their master But they decided that they would take a deeper dive into the runway length requirements based on our comments, and they reduced the runway length from 6,550, as they proposed in the master plan, to 6,140 feet. Now, that may not seem like a lot...
What would be the net difference between the reduced number and what's there in the ground now?
Right now, they're 5,525.
Now it's 5,525, okay.
Yes, on the main runway. Now, I just want to point out that the crosswind runway, they have a second runway there, it's called runway 624. That runway is closed for reconstruction at the moment, so all the aircraft operating at the airport are using runway 1533. So that's a temporary situation, but it does lead to increased annoyance, because everyone's on that runway. They're also looking in the EA some of the other issues, environmental issues, most notably PFAS, which is, it's an effluent as a result of de-icing activities. That's a little bit beyond my scope, so I didn't focus on that. But they are, they are looking, and it's, it's an important issue for the community as well, because it affects groundwater quality. And I, as far as I know, they have not yet looked into developing a graphic to accompany their voluntary noise abatement program, which I think would be a benefit, but they still haven't done it, as far as I know. But we did win a seat at the table at the airport. Chris Greeley is now representing the town of Yarmouth on their airport commission. Is that a voting member? I believe not.
No, I don't think so.
So that's really not improvement, it's the same thing, right? Well, she's there to talk, and they're listening.
Yeah, Chris is pretty vocal. I don't think that she's going to have any problem getting her point across.
I agree.
But I do feel, I do think the Yarmouth position is by, what's the word I want to say, like gratuitously extended by Barnstable. I don't think they really have to have a Yarmouth rep.
That is correct.
No, they don't have to, but at least they're, they're doing it.
Years ago, when there was first, you know, a lot of concern about noise and stuff, I think that's when they opened, of C, but Chris, Chris will do a good job.
Well, I spent some time talking with her after our meeting, so, yeah, she's on the ball, so, and I'm there to help her if she has questions.
Good, good.
So in the end, though, they decided that they were going to extend the runway 15 end only 895 feet, primarily because they have the room on their airport property to go that far. And they will still maintain the displaced threshold at 695 feet, so they'll be landing at the same place, and the runway length works out to be 6,140. The runway 33 end is exactly as it is now. So if I go back to this picture, this is pretty much what it would look like, except the runway is not 6,550. If you can picture in your mind, just shrunk a little bit to 6,140. I didn't have a graphic to give you, so we'll just use a little imagination here, but the runway length will be shorter as we recommend it, and they allowed the extension to the northwest, primarily because they can keep those dashed red lines you see there, the runway protection zones, on their property. So why not take it? There's some benefits to having them extend further to the northwest, insofar as the town of Yarmouth is concerned, and I'll talk about that.
What's the net gain, if you will, to Yarmouth by the reduction in the length of the roadway, of runway, noise, basically? A reduction, a reduction in noise?
Not necessarily, the, the, the reduction is, is, is not, the, the need to have the runway the right length was what the issue was, and they were extending it beyond a normally accepted length.
I see.
So the runway can still function, the airplanes are going to use it, they're not going to have a diminished operational capability. They still can fly the routes that they were anticipating, about 1,500 nautical miles, which will take you down to all the Florida cities, out to Texas as well. So it was just that they calculated it incorrectly, and they, they fessed up, so to speak, and they saw that they had made an error. So we corrected it for them. Where the benefit comes in is how they're lengthening the runway in terms of the benefit to the town of South Yarmouth. They're lengthening it on the northwest end. So the aircraft will be taking off when they go to the southeast, further away from the town of South, the town of Yarmouth, which allows them to be higher when they pass over the town. Now, it's not going to be substantial, and it may not be noticeable, but it's there. I'll talk a little bit more about that. Here's what I just said. The location of the 15 end is now moved 895 feet to the northwest. The planes taking off at that distance should be slightly higher than they are at present as they pass over the town. It's going to have a negligible impact on noise, but noise is a very percept, you know, perception thing. And this will at least show you that the town of Barnstable is willing to accommodate your concerns about aircraft noise. The runway 33 end is going to stay just where it is. We eliminated their intent to lengthen the runway on that end as well. That's where some of the shortage, shortening of the runway came from. They took it from the 33 end and put it on the 15 end, but they still only wound up with 6,104, not 6,550, or 6,950, which is what they were initially targeting. And as far as the crosswind runway is concerned, 624, they're going to, going to stay the The important thing really is now, what should the town do now? We've, we've, we've actually won some of our points. The runway length was too long, we're reducing, at least on paper, aircraft noise impacts because we're shifting the operations further to the northwest from where they begin. The landing is still the same. But one of the things that I mentioned in an earlier report was the need or desire to have what's called a standard instrument departure procedure. This would apply to all the aircraft that fly under instrument flight rules, which are all your air carrier aircraft, all your business jets, they fly a standard route. It's published. You will fly this route, leaving Yarmouth when operating on runway 15, unless extenuating circumstances arise, and the pilot in command controls that. But if they want to take off on a different runway end, air traffic may say, fine, we'll accommodate you, but you may have to wait a while till we get the airspace cleared for you. for you. So there's a give and take in those sorts of situations.
Can I raise a point here?
Yeah.
Years ago, I was a representative to the airport commission, and when people would complain about noise, they would basically say two things. One is that noise compliance was a voluntary procedure, and they really couldn't do anything to enforce it. They had tracking devices, and they would encourage people to identify the aircraft with these public tracking devices, and they would speak to that carrier about it. And then the second thing they would say when people complained about it was, well, notwithstanding any of our suggested rules or anything like that, the ultimate decision on a flight is with the pilot, and that's, that's an FAA.
Yeah, that's the way it is. I mean--
So my point is, with, with these standard procedures, can we expect any different than what I've just relayed to you?
You can.
I can, okay.
You can. Because now the pilot, when they file for their, get their clearance to leave the airport on runway 15, air traffic control is going to say, we want you to leave on runway 15 and follow this standard instrument departure. It'll be published that way. It'll be part of their clearance. If they want to change the clearance--
Okay.
--they have to ask air traffic control, can we change the clearance? And air traffic will say, well, sure, we can change that for you, what would you like to do? This is what I would like to do. They may say, fine, but we can't accommodate you right now on that route. There's too, you know, you're not living here in the middle of nowhere. You have Logan, you have other airports around, there's traffic all over you. You aren't aware of it, but there are routes that are being flown, and planes are there, and they're expected to be on that route, and air traffic's job is to get that plane off the ground into that system without causing any safety issues. So when the pilot wants to change a route, they have to ask permission. You even have to ask for a change if you're en route and you see a big cloud ahead of you. You say, I'd like to deviate to the left, you know, so many degrees left or right, and air traffic will have to acknowledge that and allow you to do that.
And see if, see if the traffic--
They have to make sure that you're not going to hit another plane. That's their job, right? And so when you're at low altitude, you don't want to be hitting a plane at low altitude, at any altitude. So, I mean, you need time to recover.
Okay, that's--
And recovery requires altitude, so--
And so it would have to probably be a bona fide reason why they would want to deviate from the standard procedure.
And it's very rare, I mean, if you--
That's good to know.
It's not going to, can you imagine if you are the 15th plane to take off at Kennedy, and you're in a line, and you say, well, you know, I don't want to use this runway, I want to use another one? They're going to say, sure, but we'll get you out to the other runway end, but I don't know when we're going to let you through. Clear for departure, so you just suck it up and go. That's, that's the game.
That's, that explanation is very helpful, thank you.
Okay. So what, what I would like to see done is that we have this defined departure path, which we could design in such a way that it could minimize the aircraft noise impact. And I'll show you a little bit more about that in a few slides. And that's, that's the key thing, and it can be done, it is being done at other places, and I'll show you. But the point is, is that you have some ability to have those aircraft that are the relatively noisy planes, who are flying under instrument flight rule conditions, which is, as far as airlines are concerned, and business jet people, all the commercial, they file an IFR flight plan, whether the, the skies are clear and visibility is clear, because it's easier for them and it's easier for air traffic control. So we want them to fly this specified route. Of course, it's always subject to safe operating procedure. We can't have them take off and climb at 10,000 feet per minute, and, you know, the passengers in the back will pass out, so we don't do, we're not flying F-16s here, you know, so this is not a military operation. I also think we should try to work toward getting runway 33, as far as air traffic is concerned, as the preferred runway for departures. So they'll be taking off to the northwest as much as possible. And we want them landing on 15 as much as possible. Now, that's based on winds, it's based on what's going on in the air traffic, airspace issues as well, but there's no harm in trying to push for these types of preferential runway use. And runway 6 and runway 24, the crosswind runway, should be used as much as possible, because they're the least noise impactful runways. So a lot of your general aviation aircraft can be using it, the propeller planes, even, I mean, it's, quite frankly, it's longer than 1533 already. It's a longer runway. But it's not, it's not enhanced, and it's not wide enough for the air carrier aircraft. And so it doesn't have the facility to handle it. But light planes could certainly use it. All right, so that takes, that's what I've just said in there. Now, this is a picture of an actual flight track from a JetBlue departing Hyannis going to Kennedy. And you can see that the aircraft is taking off, climbing straight out. When it gets to point D, it's 1,675 feet above the ground. This is the flight track, the actual flight track, and it's done that in about three-quarters of a minute.
Are those the Embraer jets?
That, that's a, that's an Embraer 190. This is an exact, I'm going to show you some others, what other planes are doing.
About 100 passengers, something like that?
The 190 takes 170, I think, 170 passengers.
That many?
I think so, yeah. It looks like a 737, but it's just a little smaller. I'm going to show you the actual elevations as this aircraft took off. Radar couldn't pick it up until it was 275 feet above the ground, but see where that 275 feet starts? It starts at the end of the runway. So that plane actually lifted off at runway 15 on departure, well before the end of the runway. But we can only track what the radar shows us. So when it got to point D, it's 1,675, well, that's MSL, these are MS, above mean sea level, so you've got to subtract distances. But nonetheless, the point is, is that that's the track that the plane flew, actually point-to-point as it went on this route. Keep in mind, it was 275 feet above the runway threshold as it departed. So it's already, most airplanes will not turn until they're 400 feet above the ground. It's just a safety thing. But I'll show you some things that can be done. This line in, in red is a possible standard instrument departure procedure that I think we could design here for runway 15. And the runway, the aircraft doesn't actually go straight out, it actually turns a little bit to the left, and then continues to turn to the left. And I've placed it over less populated areas to the northeast of the airport. Now, if we have that as a SID, standard instrument departure, all the aircraft departing Yarmouth on 15, under an IFR flight plan, will fly that route, unless there's some extenuating circumstances.
Are these Embraers, the modern ones, relatively quiet planes for jets?
Compared to 20 years ago, yeah.
Compared to the, yeah, the inaugural airplanes?
Sure. They're quieter.
Even those weren't that noisy.
Well, noise is a perception thing, and as I spoke with the people--
I mean, on the ground, not, not--
It's, it's a, you see the airplane, you hear the noise, okay? If you don't see the airplane, you may not hear the noise. It's a fight-or-flight issue comes back all to the days when we lived in caves. We still have that in our body, and we respond. When we hear a strange noise, we wonder, you know, it's a fearful thing. When you hear the mower outside, that's what we did this afternoon, nobody concerned, was concerned about the noise from the mower, because they know the mower is temporary, they know it's not going to hurt them, they're not going to crash in a house or anything. So it's a different perception on noise. Noise is a very, very peculiar, subjective thing, it varies from individual to individual.
I remember when they had the inaugural JetBlue flight, I was invited, being a representative to the airport at that time, as was our state rep, Cleon Turner. He was there with me, and we were out in the tarmac, and honestly, I didn't think that plane, that plane then was that, that noisy.
See, maybe not to you, you know, if, if you're not an aviation person, it's going to be loy, it's going to be louder to you. If you like planes, you're going to love it. It's, it's, it's just, it's human, it's human reaction.
Probably whatever that noise level was, the planes today would probably have improved upon that.
Planes today are definitely more quiet than they used to be. They're definitely more quiet. And they're getting quieter, but it's, it's still noisy, and if you live, you know, half a mile off the end of the runway, I mean, how much relief can you possibly expect, right? So this, I want to show you, this is an actual flight, this is an Embraer 190 leaving Kennedy going to Atlanta. And that runway is, runway 13 right, 31 left. If you, they're parallel runways, this is the runway that's on the left side of Kennedy, it heads to the northwest. He's departing on runway 31 left. Notice where the green line starts. It's not at the end of the runway, the runway is 14,100-some-feet-long, okay? This is the runway they use to go places. The runway length determines how heavy the airplane can be on takeoff and where you can go. So this plane lifted off well before reaching the end of the runway, and began a climbing left turn to a specific place. This is an actual flight, and this is the actual track by altitude of that flight. And you see, when the radar picked it up, they were already 75 feet above the ground. And they began a turn fairly quickly, you could see the, the red line is a little bit off of the center line already, they're turning already, and they're making a curve, going out, and they're heading out toward the southwest, right? They're not going to go to Atlanta somehow. But these are the elevations of that aircraft at each point, and this is a, a SID that's called an RNAV SID, means it's point, it's point-to-point by lat and long, as opposed to navigational aids. The, the procedure is designed to fly to a specific waypoint. And you go from that waypoint to the next waypoint to the next waypoint, and the airplane is configured already on the computer flight management system to fly that route. You just push a button and it goes. The pilots get paid for when it don't go. Something goes wrong, that's, that's where they earn their keep, right? So the airplane takes off and is already turning off the runway center line and moving away, which is what I think we can accomplish here as well. It's already turning, trying to avoid Hyannis Park area, trying to go over, there's a park area out there, and just moving out where there's nobody, where there's nobody to hear it, so to speak. You're going to hear it, but it won't be as bad.
Yeah.
So these are my final points, but I have one more after this, which we brought up just at the meeting. We've been successful. We've made some comments to the, to the airport, they've listened to the comments, they've changed their plan because of our comments. We can even be more proactive and continue to be by doing these things, looking for the standard instrument departure procedure, which Katie Service, the airport manager, has said, and others have said, they believe would be very worthwhile pursuing, and they're supportive. They just haven't done it yet. Perhaps they'll do this graphic complement, which I think we should push, we should continue to be proactive and say, we think this would be beneficial for our community if you would put this into a graphic form. And pursue the 33 as the preferred runway for departures, and 15 as a preferred runway for landings. And use 624, the crosswind runway, whenever you can. I mean, they're investing a lot of money in the runway, use it. We need to continue to monitor this environmental assessment process and make sure that when they come up with something, we come back with a comment, if it's, if it's rational and productive in your interest to do so, just like we did with the runway length. We shouldn't hesitate to do that. They've been receptive to what we've had to say. And if they implement any mitigation measure, we've got to make sure that it actually gets done. Now, this runway is slated for construction, extension 2027 or so, maybe 2028, assuming that there's money to do it. There's a good chance that they are going to have to re-justify the length of the runway again, only because time has changed, and the FAA just doesn't automatically give them money to lengthen a runway based on a plan that they did five or six or seven years ago. At least, we have the federal government thinking positively and productively in that, in that regard. So they're going to need to re-justify this entire process for some of their programs that they'd like as it goes along. But it doesn't mean that we have to wait for that. The standard instrument departure procedure is something that would benefit the town now. There's no reason why it couldn't be implemented now. And if the runway does get lengthened, it's even going to be better, because they'll be starting further to the northwest, and they'll be a little bit higher up, and they'll be able to turn sooner. As long as they don't turn over more populated areas, I mean, we've got to be careful where they go. So I brought up this issue, not, this idea, suggestion to the, to the people that were at the meeting today from this, from their civic association. And we said, why don't we run a test of how effective this standard instrument departure procedure could be? Because hearing is believing. So we could design this procedure in a preliminary fashion, not get too detailed on it, with the cooperation of the air traffic control tower, because they know the airspace, and I know it as well, but we'll work together, and find a business jet operator who is willing to allow that aircraft, his aircraft or her aircraft, to fly two routes. One, the straight-out approach, the departure, and one using this SID, this climbing left turn. And let people on the ground listen, let them sit in their homes and listen, let them be in their car and listen, let them sit on the, on the runway, I mean, on, on the pavement, by where they live, whatever, and just run a test and see, is it quiet, quieter for you or not? And if it does make some difference, then go full bore and try to push for the publication of that procedure, which only the FAA can do unless you are authorized by them to design it for them. And there, I do work with another company that has that authority, I do not. I look at the feasibility of things and, and, but this is a company that actually publishes the procedure with FAA. They take responsibility for, for it, all the liability. So it's just that FAA doesn't have enough staff to do it. So they have private companies. There's only one in the United States that does it, the others have dropped out. But I happen to have a working relationship with them. Nonetheless, I'm thinking we might want to run a test and see if it does make sense, because why pursue it and push it if it's not going to be meaningful to the residents that are imposed with aircraft noise?
How feasible is that?
The test?
To have that happen?
Well, I've done it at East Hampton, New York, with helicopters. I did it at Blue Bell Airport, which is the home of the Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association, where we had aircraft, different aircraft take off, different ways, so the people who, it was an affluent area, and people were concerned about noise. And we demonstrated that this is, this will work and this won't work, and so it can be done. And why not run the test? Because you may push, push, push for a procedure, and FAA publishes it, and it doesn't provide any relief to the residents at all. Now you've got the pilots flying under a SID that some of them may not want, because a climbing left turn to the northeast doesn't help the pilot that wants to go to Atlanta. He's burning more fuel and time to go where he wants, where he has to go. So why not give it a, a little, let's see what it looks like, let's hear what it looks like, kind of thing? They were in favor of that, the group we met with today. But it's something that we could do, as long as we have-- But it's something that we could do as long as we have a willing operator who'll fly the, fly it for us. Maybe a resident here who has a plane that, as a jet, is willing to make a donation of some flight time and fly two, fly two departures, regular and, and this curved one.
Now, would you want it to be then one of the larger jets or could it be one of the smaller, leaner jets?
It could be, well, getting JetBlue to do it is pretty tough to do.
Oh, yeah.
I think you'd have to go to an aircraft that's based here, that's a business jet, that's willing to do it. And not necessarily a quiet business jet, not one of the small ones, but one that is a substantial size that the local people recognize as being somewhat noisy. And maybe with, with the help of the airport, because Katie Service is supportive of this SID, I think she would support as well going to one of her base tenants and say, look, will you run this test for us? Because it costs money to fly that plane. It's not cheap. So I mean, I was able to get the helicopter guys at East Hampton to do it. And it was successful in terms of our noise. It wasn't successful in terms of what East Hampton is doing, but that's, that's beyond my situation. Here, we could have noise monitors set up. You know, you can monitor your noise on your phone, you know? It's not, it's not that accurate, but it's a relative. This is noisier, this is less noisy, kind of a thing. And just run this. Let's see. Let's hear, let's hear the difference. So that's my suggestion, but these are other things that you still need to be doing. You need to be pushing, not let the airport get away, because I have a feeling that they're not going to publish and push for this, for the SID right away. It costs money to do, that's number one. Number two, they'll just say in their environmental assessment, we're going to, we're going to pursue noise abatement procedure, SID with the FAA as we move along. And that's probably what they're going to say. That's my guess. But my thinking is, is that this procedure would help you now, regardless of whether they lengthen the runway or not. And what we're trying to do is reduce the noise impact to the southeast. It's the only way I know how to do it.
Would it be appropriate to reach out to them ahead of time and say, we'd like you to try to implement this?
Well, they have a-
On a trial basis?
Well, we haven't approached them on the trial basis, just as a test. I do know that they're supportive of the SID. They see it as a value for you. How far they're going to take it on their own, I don't know. It's, they, they have to request it.
I think you mentioned a cost factor to it.
Well-
Would it be much of a cost factor that involves?
If you have a private company do it, yes. The FAA does it for free.
They do?
Yeah, but you've got to get them to do it.
Okay. Is it difficult?
It can't be. It could take a minimum of 18 months to get a procedure published, minimum. And sometimes it'll take three, four years. That's why these private companies are, well, there's only one left, does it, because they can implement it for the FAA. And they can do it in six months, maybe nine. But it's much quicker. They have the same, they use the same programs that FAA uses. Very complex. And so that's why I have to step back and say, all right, you, you guys do it, because I, I can only do just so much. I don't have a zillion dollars in computers to, you know, to analyze this situation. But they do it all the time. So, and, and, and they're good people. So I think, though, we can come up with air traffic controllers working with us and, and an operator, come up with something that the operator feels is safe to fly and that kind of mimics what I've shown. We have to, we have to tweak it, it's obvious. You just can't put a pin, pins on a, on a map and say, fly this. They've got to, we've got to work it out. Then work out the procedure, let them try it, run the test. We'll tell certain people when it's going to be and we're not going to tell others. Just see if people even observe it, just by being outside. That's what we did at East Hampton. And it was, and we, but we did it at a different, I was, in, for East Hampton, I had found a site for a new heliport for, they were going to close that airport. I said, let's find a place for the helicopters to go and you can keep your airport for your fixed wing airplanes. The big complaint at East Hampton, New York, were the, were the helicopters. So I found a site for helicopters, but the town just didn't, wouldn't bite. They had their, that, they were fixed on what they wanted to do, that's fine. But we ran the test anyway and I got the helicopters from New York City flying these routes for half a day at their expense. And we proved that it would be quieter than what they're experiencing at other, just because of the way it was routed. So the same thing can be done here.
Sir, while we're dealing with the environmental assessment that's going on currently, I realize that PFAS isn't probably your area of expertise, but do we need to look at another consultant to make sure that the contamination plumes from the airport are not going to have a damaging effect to Yarmouth drinking water?
I talked to Bob about that earlier on. I think your water department is taking tests, right? You've got some wells, test wells?
You've got that agreement we just approved with the DEP is coming in to do some more testing around that southeastern perimeter into Yarmouth.
Is that surface water or groundwater?
It's surface water.
In Mill Creek.
Does that pick up the contamination plumes that are coming from the airport?
Yeah, it's, it's supposed to give a, a further analysis of it closer to Yarmouth.
Okay. Does that contamination perk up that these new wells are going to pick up on?
I, I don't, I don't know the science of it, but that's what the point is.
Just jump in. I, the information that we received in tonight's packet was regarding surface water-
Right.
-sampling.
Right.
There needs to be more work done.
It's groundwater, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're dealing with groundwater contamination and the issue is you've got the Meyer wells pumping at an excessive rate drawing and all sorts of PFAS. There needs to be some really aggressive sampling and monitoring done. And DEP, that's the agency that's really dictating what gets done here now.
The airport did, did have a study done on their groundwater.
Familiar with that and there's some issues-
Thick, I mean, I'm, I mean, it was beyond me.
Right. We're very familiar with that. There's some issues and there's, it's just a very complicated site from a hydrological point of view. I think it would be a mistake to saddle this consultant with that. I do think, however, Jeff and Lori are trying their best to stay on top of it. At some point, they may be able to be prepared to come in and update us on what they know and what further recommendations they might have in terms of testing and consulting assistance.
Much like I did, I, you know, we, we challenged the airport on their runway length analysis and we were successful. You can challenge that consultant's report on the groundwater. If you, if you have the skills to do it.
I think quite frankly, DEP is driving that train and we need to engage them-
And let them do it.
-more directly.
Yeah.
But like I said, I think Jeff and Lori have done a good job in staying on top of that. We should follow their lead. As you know, we've got two of the best people in public works in water.
We do. I just, I haven't heard much information when it comes to-
Yeah.
-monitoring that particular contamination.
Oh, I would, I would agree. We need to revisit it.
I wish I could answer more precisely, but I just, it's not my, my thing.
No.
Can I ask, the people that were there this afternoon?
Yes.
Were you basically then able to answer their concerns? Was there anything else that they were bringing up that you were not able to address today?
They still have, there was one individual there who still doesn't understand why they're, why they're trying to expand, you know, improve the airport when there's no traffic and the traffic is, levels are down and why don't we go to Otis and those things? And, you know, the people, they just, I can't answer all those questions.
Can I take a stab?
Sure.
I, I think what's going on is, is in order to sustain eligibility for FAA funding, airport improvement funds, you need to do these exercises of regular updates of your master plan. And obviously, there's a whole host of things they would like to do, so they've dolled it up into this big project, talking about enhancing the future viability of the airport. But the bottom line, and tell me if I'm wrong, but in order to sustain eligibility for federal aviation, AI, airport improvement program funds, which are paid for with dollars, fuel taxes-
User dollars.
User dollars, right? In order to sustain that eligibility, they have to keep this plan updated.
So they're updating the plan, but not necessarily executing it?
Of course they're going to try to execute it.
They're executing it, but it takes time.
Right.
One of the recommendations in the plan was to improve the runway safety area on that crosswind runway.
Yeah.
And they're, and they're doing that at a big expense because they're putting in what's called EMAS, Engineered Material Arresting Systems. This is a, this is like crushable concrete. So if the airplane overruns the runway, they, they run into this material which slows them down, much like you'll see on a steep down, you know, hill, they have the truck, where the trucks can run over and it's the same idea. They applied it to airports. It's very effective. Problem is, once the plane goes through it, it destroys it. You've got to rebuild it. And there's only one company in the U.S. that makes it, so it's very expensive. But it's a solution. It's the last resort solution.
Mr. Chairman, just one last, you know how we update our open space plan on a regular basis in order to maintain eligibility for land and water conservation and funds and other funds? It's the same concept. This plan has to be updated by them if they want to continue to get all that federal money. And as I think everyone knows, most of the money for airport improvements are funded through the federal government. Very little of it comes from the town.
Right. For this airport, 90% federal funding and 5% from the state. So they're playing with nickel dollars. It's, it's a great program. It's very competitive and there's not a lot of money to go around. Now, just years past, we had the CARES Act and other things and money was flowing into airports like crazy. That's, that's going to simmer down. And there was 100% funding as well. So just get people working, you know, and improving situations. I, I think, you know, I think the town needs to be congratulated for going forward and being proactive on the runway issues. The community we met with was very appreciative of the, you know, what you've done, able to do. I'm certainly thankful that I had the opportunity to work with you to do that. There's still more to be done and I think they're going to have some ideas as well. I mean, pretty much what I've been telling them, which I'm telling you. Your work isn't done. You've got to stay on top of it. And I'm, I'm available to help as, as needed. Kudos to you for moving forward and, and stepping up and challenging some of the concepts.
Okay. Questions or comments? Anybody? Darkus, Dan, Mark?
Yes. First of all, I want to thank you for your work. It's been great having you advising us and helping us become smart on a subject that is, it's, it's very easy for one's eyes to glaze over, you know? And I want to thank Bob for finding you and tracking you down and getting you here because you've, you've added a lot to our understanding and that's appreciated. I think your concluding comments are right on target and, you know, and I, I hope that we can continue to work with you in the future on a as-needed basis when things come up because you've been a huge help.
That's the way we have it structured.
Yep.
And I think that the next thing that I could do to really help the town right now is to try to find a way to do this test. I really think that it will, it'll be very informative. I don't know what the outcome is going to be. Really, I can't say, but I know it's worth a try. And if we get the airport to cooperate with us, and they would, I'm pretty sure Katie would, would, would say, let's do it. We can use her influence to find an operator who will allow, you know, spending $20,000 in fuel or whatever to get that plane up in the air and coming in and coming out, whatever the cost is. There is a cost and we don't, it'd be, it's a donation, but it's for the good. And if the person is community spirited and minded, I think they would be willing to do it. I've done it before, so we can try again. So I, I went over this rather quickly. I'm, I'm sorry if it was too fast for you or whatever, but again, you've had some success so far. It's been meaningful success and we can continue to find other good ways to help the airport see what they want and get what you want out of it, too.
Well, thank you very much, Ron. I, I echo Mark's comments. We really appreciate your expertise and your guidance with not only us, but the group down there in Hyannis Park. Very involved citizens, very capable people and big stakeholders in this whole process. So as Mark said, we hope that as we go forward, we can use your services as, as we need them.
I haven't retired yet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now we're going to hear about the factor of one.
Oh, what's that?
The proverbial factor of one, the hearing annual tax classification. So we're going to hear about the shrinking commercial base, the unsustainability of placing a greater tax burden on the commercial sector and taxing it at the same rate as residential, which is known as the factor of one. Do I have a motion?
There you go.
Yeah.
I was going to ask you if you wanted to join me at the podium, actually.
I think I've heard this one before.
I think so. We'll do a rerun. Let's rewind the tape.
Okay, will do. My name is Tara Monroe. I'm the Assistant Assessor for the Town of Yarmouth. And we're here this evening because we are currently in the process of setting the tax rate, which we do annually this time of the year, in order to issue the first half tax bills. After the budgeting process and town meeting take place, the next step in the process is for the assessors to determine through mark, real estate market activities, what the value of all property in the town should be. Once the values are computed, they are reviewed by the Department of Revenue for approval and certification. Our values have been submitted and approval was granted on Wednesday, September 6. Moving on, towns that are certified by the Department of Revenue as assessing at full and fair cash value must decide whether or not to tax all classes of properties at the same rate, which is commonly referred to as adopting a factor of one, or to shift the burden among the major property classes. You, as our local officials, have the option of shifting the burden to the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes anywhere from 1 to 50%. This would create two different tax rates, one for the residential class of properties and one for the commercial class of properties. There is a graphic in your packet that illustrates the shift. We did submit, so you should have that. And the Board of Assessors voted to recommend to the Board of Selectmen a factor of one and to reject the residential and small commercial exemption at their July 20th, 2023 meeting. In conclusion, I will tell you that to date, the Town of Yarmouth's policy has been to adopt a factor of one and to reject the residential and commercial exemption. Oh, sorry, the small commercial exemption. And I would be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Darkus?
Not at this time, no. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Mark? My only observation is, and, and I, I obviously support the recommendation, but I do think that there's going to be growing pressure at some point to look at residential exemptions. We're seeing this in so many other towns on the Cape. You know, Barnstable, Provincetown, a host of other communities are really looking at that. So I think at some point, we may want to just get more of a briefing in terms of how the, why the other towns are doing it with increased frequency. And I do know in Barnstable, for example, the exemption's being used as a way to mitigate wastewater costs. And I've been briefed on that by the Finance Director in the Town of Barnstable. And they've used the exemption as a very creative way to address some of those added burdens on the taxpayers in Barnstable. So I'm just sort of raising a red flag that at some point, I think, we're going to want to- So I'm just sort of raising a red flag that at some point, I think we're going to want to really have a conversation about that, particularly learning more about why other towns are going in that direction and what they see as... What do you see as the pros and cons? And just to have a briefing and an update. So I would just store that away. We don't need to get into that tonight, but I just want to put that out there.
All right. So we won't get into it tonight, but just to address that, that is a good point. That is something we have discussed that... Because you wouldn't... You really wouldn't adopt the residential exemption tonight. It is something that takes...
Again, I'm not talking about it for tonight. I'm just flagging it as a future discussion item at a future meeting.
Yeah. No, and we appreciate that. That is something that we would like to actually, you know, make a presentation for you with regard to the residential exemption, how it works, and, you know, kind of go from there. And then I'm going to see if Andy has any more comments that he might want to throw in there.
So what's the ratio now of the commercial? Is it like around 10?
Well, 5.9, somewhere in that neighborhood, 5.6%.
92% residential.
Is it?
92% residential, so it's about 8%.
Is that low? It's 8%?
Yep.
For all three.
Yep.
I thought it was around 10. It's 8?
Correct.
Wow.
Well, if you have more motels being converted to shelters, I think that percentage would even change.
And again, not for tonight, but will you be able in the future to kind of give us a read on why some of the towns are making the adjustment on commercial properties, such as you mentioned P-Town and what was the other town?
Well, it relates to the residential exemption.
I think Mark specifically was talking residential exemption.
Yeah, I'm not talking about changing the percentage. I'm talking about towns using this tool of the residential exemption.
Which will increase the commercial.
Not necessarily. That's what I'm saying.
Oh?
No.
The factor of one, shifting the rate
Right.
to the commercial, industrial, that's what you're speaking about.
Right.
Mark is speaking about the residential exemption.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's a different... And the reason why I'm raising it is in the Town of Barnstable...
They do have a residential exemption.
They do have an exemption, and what's been happening is the pressure on wastewater investments. What they've done is they've figured out a way to use... And I'm not suggesting that we do this in Yarmouth. Don't anybody panic. But they've been able to figure out a way to make a residential exemption that mitigates a property tax increase on a significant portion of property taxpayers. And I don't really want to get into that tonight, but I do think...
They have a big commercial base there, too, with the mall and places like that.
Seasonal residents.
Yeah. That's really what it gets to. It's a shift in terms of seasonality. But again, I, you know, I kind of regret even bringing it up because now we're going down that road.
I see what you're saying. Okay.
I just want to flag it because it's a very interesting conversation. It's something that I think the board needs to be aware of. I think we may have some pressure to at least think about it more seriously, particularly in phases four, five, six, you know? So I just want to put folks on notice. I think it would be a mistake not to get briefed on it sometime within the next year or two.
And I think a lot of communities, you know, if the Selectmen decided to explore the residential exemption, in a lot of communities, they would form working groups that would include, you know, the pertinent people, tax collector, community development, assessors, administration, and whoever else. In that way, it would just ensure that everybody could weigh in on the subject and do the necessary analysis and plan properly for the possible implementation.
It's a two-year process, even if you want to do it.
Correct.
Yeah. But I just... I'm just speaking just as one board member. I do think as we implement wastewater, our overall program, it would be a mistake not to have a conversation on this topic because there's some very sophisticated finance directors in other towns that are using the exemption to enable some of that infrastructure cost to be covered by a property tax. But the exemption has been able to provide significant relief for the residents that might most be adversely impacted by it because there's a shift there. So again, rather than getting into details tonight, I've been just fascinated by what I've heard in Barnstable.
Especially with the number of second homeowners.
Exactly. So are we looking for a motion? Do we need a public hearing, or what's the next?
Yeah, this is a public hearing, actually. So do we have any members of the public that wish to be heard in this? Okay, we have the usual public input.
All right. Can I move to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman?
You may.
Okay.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passed by 4-0 vote. We need a motion.
And I think there's a script in here for this. "I move that the Town of Yarmouth continue to tax all classes at the same rate by adopting a factor of one and to reject the residential exemption and small commercial exemption."
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed by a vote of 4-0. We're sorry to keep you waiting so long, but the natives were restless tonight.
No troubles at all. We're a resilient bunch here, so no worries. Everything's good. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. We move into Boarding Committee actions. We have a resignation
Who?
of Linda Callahan from Library and Andrew Kraus from At-Large seat on the Community Housing Committee. So does somebody want to...
I'd make a motion that we accept the resignation with thanks to Linda Callahan for the Library Planning Board and for Andrew Kraus for the Community Housing Committee.
Okay. Second?
Yes, second.
All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, so we have accepted both of those resignations. We go to Golf Enterprise Committee.
I move to appoint Ken Lefrenney as a regular member of the Golf Enterprise Committee. This appointment is for a three-year term, which will run through April of 2026.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Recycling and Solid Waste Advisory Committee.
I move to appoint Harold Burlingame as a regular member of the Recycling and Solid Waste Advisory Committee. This appointment is for a three-year term, which will run through February of 2026.
Second.
Motion second on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, Burlingame. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Carries unanimously 4-0. Community Housing Committee Representative Drew Kraus.
I recommend... I move to appoint Andrew Kraus as the Housing Authority's representative to the Community Housing Committee. This appointment is for a one-year term, which will run through September of 2024.
All those... Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Community Housing Committee Joshua Trot, John Barr, Philomena Songhors?
Songhors, yeah. I move to appoint Joshua Trot as a regular member of the Community Housing Committee. This appointment is for a regular three-year, unexpired term, term to run through January of 2024.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay.
I move to appoint John Barr as a regular member of the Community Housing Committee. The appointments are to fill regular three-year, unexpired terms, terms to run through January 2024.
Second.
Okay. Motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Carries unanimously 4-0.
I move to appoint Famala Songhors as an alternate member of the Community Housing Committee. This appointment is for a one-year, unexpired term to run through January of 2024.
Second.
Okay. Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously 4-0. Disability Commission Donna Arnold.
I move to appoint Donna Arnold as a regular member of the Disability Commission. This appointment is to fill an unexpired term, which will run through March of 2024.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Debbie Clark, I want to get a hold on that after you make your motion.
I move to reappoint Debbie Clark as an alternate member of the Recreation Committee. This appointment is for a one-year term, which will run through July of 2024.
Second.
Okay. She stated publicly that she does not want to be appointed an alternate. She's not interested in being an alternate. So... But she is interested in being a full-time member. Frankly, I'm a little bit in the dark as to why she's not being reappointed as a full-time member. I mean, the number of people and the status of the people in the community that have come in here and endorsed her appointment was overwhelming. I've never seen anything like it in my life of any appointee to a committee. So I'm just at a loss as to why... I mean, I know Debbie personally, and she was on the committee when I was on it many, many moons ago, and she's still there, and she still loves doing the work. You know, I think if she wants to serve another term on the committee, we should appoint her to keep her full-time seat unless there's some compelling reason not to. The other thing that concerns me a little bit is I think there are some other openings. And generally, when there are other openings, we have the appointments for the full-time members on at the same time that we have the appointments for the alternates on. So we can kind of, you know, kind of weigh out who the candidates are and who's getting what positions. And yet, the only appointment we've had on here since August is the alternate appointment. And I think there's, if I'm not mistaken, two full-time seats that are open. And we don't have those candidates in front of us. We don't have any information on those candidates. So I'm a little bit, I don't know what the word is, but a little bit unsettled about the way this appointment's being handled and the way all these, really upstanding, high achieving, highly respectable members of the community, their recommendations are being kind of just cast aside. I'm not willing to do that. I will vote for her for a full-time position, but I will not vote for her for an alternate position because she says she doesn't want to do it. Why would we nominate her to a position that she's not interested in serving? So those are my comments. I'd like to hear from the other board members on this. The other thing is, I'm going to tell you, one of the reasons, I got to say this. One of the reasons that I ran for Selectmen is I want to make a difference. I want to help people. And I know how important this is to her. And it really, it really goes beyond serving on a committee. To her, and I hope I don't sound disrespectful to you, Debbie, is it's really a matter of an identity to her. It's that important. And I don't want to hurt her by not reappointing her. I think it'll have a big impact on her personally, and I don't want to do that to her.
So you want to reappoint her?
I would move to reappoint her to her position, her regular position.
For a three-year term or for a one-year term?
Three.
Three-year term.
I figure like longevity, like all of us, we're going to outlive ourselves. And no disrespect, Debbie. Same applies to me and then some, but especially after tonight.
Could I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
So I'm not aware of what the current status of the committee is. How many people are... Is the committee at full force at this point? Are there open seats?
We have currently, is my understanding, one seat open.
Seat open?
One seat open.
And are there other reappointments that are due up as well?
There will be. Their time hasn't come quite yet.
Okay. Have you investigated as to whether or not other people are interested in filling the full-time slot?
We still have some people that have not gotten back to us yet that originally wrote out their talent bank forms stating that they were interested in recreation. But they're checking with their families to see if they can make that commitment and have not gotten back to me yet. Can I just point out that one of the things that... No offense to Debbie, and Debbie has done a great job on the commission, and she has been on it for over 30 years. In fact, I think at this point, over 33 years. My concern comes from, and this came up actually about 20 years ago, there was talk then. And we haven't really put a fine line as to, you know, should there be term limits on positions? Should, is 30 years... Should we really be looking at even like 25? You know, people have said to me, "Well, that's an awful long time to be on one board. Aren't there other things that, you know, she could do? And why don't we have term limits on board positions?" I've heard this, that perhaps setting it at 25 years for a board position because it shouldn't be, no position should really be, quote, "a lifetime position," is what I've heard. I leave it up to the board what they would like to do.
Can I ask you a question? How many people in the Town of Yarmouth, other than Debbie Clark, have served for 30 years on a board? Or have served for more than 25 years on a board?
None that I know of.
I think the opposite's the case. I think it's hard to get people to stay on boards. We have more resignations tonight than we have appointments. I mean, if we had some universal dominance of committees by 30-year members, I'd fully agree with you. I'd say, "Yeah, you know, I mean, we got to make some room down below." But I don't think anybody in this town has served other than her. I think if... And the other thing is, with policies, we kind of got to look at policies across the board and not with respect to an individual candidate. If you look at the Board of Appeals, for example, you've got a couple of attorneys on that board that have been there a long time. I don't know how long. But I'd be very loath to kick them off on a term limited basis because it's almost impossible to replace people like that. David Reed was on the board for something like 20 or 25 years. He was the chairman, and they had a policy way back in the day, the Selectmen, they had a 10-year policy. And they basically send him out to pasture. Now he represents clients in front of the Town of Yarmouth and makes a lot of money when he used to be doing all this free work for the town. So if we want to look at policies, I think one of the first things we have to look at and say, "How many members do we have in the town actively that have 25 years of service?" I'll bet you there's very, very few. And similarly, 30 years? It's unheard of. I'll bet you there's nobody else in this whole town that's served on a board for 30 years.
I would agree with you.
So we don't want to have a policy that just affects one person because that's... You kind of hold yourself out there as targeting an individual as opposed to having a universal policy that's going to have some broad applicability. So that's my concern.
I have two comments, I guess. The first is that when somebody serves on a board for an extended period of time, there can be an overly inflated sense of ownership and control. I've heard some comments along those lines. So that concerns me a little bit. However, on the other side, if we don't have people that are ready, willing, and able to jump in, I'm a little reluctant to take this kind of vote tonight. The idea of the term limits, and it doesn't have to be 10 years, but the idea of the term limits was it shouldn't be always the same people. And I think at one point, the town had a policy where somebody had to step off a board for a year, and then they could go back on. and then they could go back on the board if they wanted to.
Right, I think you're right, yeah.
But it gave an opportunity for new blood and new oppo, you know, just, it opened it up if, if somebody new had a real interest and a new energy they wanted to bring to a committee. That's not here yet. I'm not hearing that it's here yet. But, so, I guess, you know, one solution would be to appoint for a year to, or to, or even to hold off until we vet further, if there are other candidates. I have great deal of respect for what Debbie's done for this town. So, none of these comments are, I hope, being taken negatively. They're not intended that way. I just, I have always had a concern with people staying on a committee too long. I don't, I don't think it's healthy. And as I said, it can lead to an overinflated sense of entitlement and purpose and control over a committee that I've seen in other settings. I'm not saying that's the case here. But I do have concerns about 30-plus years. I think that's, that's a long time. But absent somebody that's really gung-ho and ready to step in, I'm a little hesitant to change the deck at the same time. That's kinda where I'm coming from at this point. You know, whether we maybe postpone this, or whether we do an appointment for a year. I appreciate Debbie's not interested in the alternate member, and I accept that.
What if we compromise and made it a two-year appointment? It's a three-year appointment normally.
I don't know.
Would you be comfortable with that?
We haven't heard from Mark yet. What, what are your sense on this?
Well, I, I, I tend to, you know, as a former administrator, I, I tend to act very bureaucratically on these things. And I just look at the record, right? As Mike had indicated earlier, we've had testimonial after testimonial after testimonial in support of the applicant's qualifications and dedications to serve. And then on the other side, there's been nothing negative or anything on the record to indicate that there might be an issue or a problem. I hear about the, the, the only factor that comes into play regarding, on the negative side, would be tenure. But I would agree with the chairman that I think if we're gonna adopt a policy, it needs to be across the board. We just can't single out a particular seat on a particular committee or perceive it. That needs to be a uniform policy, based on some real deliberation and review and discussion. And quite frankly, I'm not entirely convinced, particularly in this day and age, where it's a real challenge to sustain dedicated volunteers and committees. I just, I'm, there needs to be a compelling reason for term limits at the local level. I, I mean, I'm all in favor of term limits for Supreme Court justices and members of Congress and presidents and a host of other people. But in local government, I have often found that the folks that have served the longest tend, tend to, you know, have an enormous amount of institutional knowledge that can be helpful. And then if there's, as, as, as we've discussed, if there's a need to make a transition, because we got new blood that's anxious to get in to serve, then I think those become factors as part of the consideration. But again, I just have to go with what's on the rec, when we look at the administrative record, what's in front of us. And it, and, and all of, there, there have been a significant number of endorsements, but from people who have served the town well. And so I'm struggling with why Debbie wouldn't be reappointed. So that's, 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 that's where I'm coming from. If there was something in the record, that's something that came out that said there was an issue or a problem, or something happened, then, then that would, that's one thing. But all we've received is, you know, again, if I'm a personnel director and looking at the applicant's folder, I've got, you know, a stack of endorsements. That's pretty impressive. And, and given the people that have endorsed her, you know, it's difficult to ignore those. So, I think maybe it's a moment to pause and look at the entire committee, look at the entire slate. You know, maybe there are members of the Recreation Commission that feel that they need to weigh in and be a little bit more involved in the process. I don't know. But I don't think I'm prepared, I am not gonna vote tonight to not appoint Debbie Clark. But I'm willing to table this and, and discuss it at a later meeting, where we have an opportunity to look at the commission as a whole and, and take some action. But, and, yeah, I thi, I think taking this kind of step now to appoint Debbie to an alternate position, where she really doesn't have any interest in serving in that capacity, makes no sense. So, I, I think I would either reappoint her, or I would be open to revisiting it.
Yeah.
Along with the other, not just her, but with some of the other, you know.
Just to see if we can bring this to bear, and we may not be able to. I'm gonna move to appoint her for her reg, her regular three-year term. Somebody wanna second that?
Three-year term?
Yeah. Somebody wanna second that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion?
I, I hear both your comments. And I frankly, personally, I'm concerned about over 30 years.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, I would be more amenable to either hearing more from the committee or, um, dropping that number down.
To what? Who?
Do you, how many people do you have that are possibly interested?
At the moment, I have one.
But isn't Dennis Lucia up for appointment?
He will be coming up.
Soon?
Yes.
Very soon?
Yes.
So like, how soon?
I'm not, I, I'm not specific as to the date for him.
Yeah, so I think there's, there's gonna be a second opening very, very soon. I think their terms kinda were very close in time.
Have you been given an indication that he's not interested in continuing?
He's mentioned that he's not that interested. But, you know, you made the comment about taking a year off and then revisiting. I would make the suggestion that we would appoint her then for one year, and then revisit it a year from now. I would be willing to make that motion. Lot can happen in a year.
I'm a person of compromise. I would be looking, I would be looking at two, two years. Just to get it over with and get it done.
All right, I'll go with it too.
I mean, I, I keep thinking honestly, as some of the people that, I would love to think would come to the podium and speak on my behalf, but it'd be a cold day in hell. I mean, some of the pillars of the community. I, I've never seen anything like it, I really haven't. And it's a great credit to Debbie that she has that kind of community support. And, and I mean it, I'm not being facetious. I'll never see the day when I get that kind of tribute from the community. So I, I'm kind of a...
You're changing your motion, Mr. Chairman?
I'm gonna change it to a two-year appointment, my motion.
All right, I'll second that.
So Dan?
You're gonna take a vote? I'll go with it, I'll go with it.
Okay. Well, so I'm gonna move to appoint Debbie Clark for a period of two years. I don't know the exact dates of the appointment.
It would be to go through, um, July of 2025.
July of, through, July of 2025.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, I'm making that motion. You're seconding, Mark?
Hmm.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed?
Nay.
So that passes by a vote of three in favor, one against, and one absent. So it's a two-year appointment. We got Gary Ellis next from the CPC.
I move to reappoint Gary Ellis as a regular member at large of the Community Preservation Committee. This appointment is for a three-year term, which will run through July of 2026.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes by a vote of four to zero. We have minutes, request to amend February 7th, 2023 minutes. What's wrong with the February 7th, 2023 minutes?
We have names spelled incorrectly, and we need to fix it. And Anne Marie Ellis, Anne Marie Ellis is referenced in our minutes with incorrectly spelled.
This was the one I saw before, okay.
And it was Bond Council that pointed it out, so we just wanna follow their...
Remember, I talked to you about that before, and I thought it was on a different agenda?
Yes.
It wasn't, I was misreading it, yeah, I, I, okay.
So I, I would like to move, Mr. Chairman, that we make the correction and the appropriate name change correction to the February 7th, 2023 minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes by a four-zero vote.
Is that mo, is that motion and vote sufficient to make Bond Council happy?
Yes.
Mr. Rittenhouse, okay.
Certainly will.
Okay, you know how anal they get about these things, okay.
We'd like to keep them happy.
We do.
Okay on that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, the next one is approval amended November 1st of 2022.
Motion approved the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes by a four-zero vote. And the next one is amendments of January 10th, 2023.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Passes by a four-zero vote. We're on to agenda review. The next meeting, as you know, is gonna start at 5:00. We're gonna interview three candidates for the position of Finance Director, which has been vacant for quite a, how long has it been since we've not had a Finance Director? Six months or so?
Yeah, at least.
At least, yeah. So that's an important thing to, to deal with. And then the very next week...
Before we move on, Mr. Chairman, is, do we, is it, are the names, can they be announced tonight? I mean, we, the, the individuals?
Candidates?
Candidates.
Or is that still?
If not, I, I don't wanna create a problem.
Yeah, I, I have two of the names, and I, I just, I don't know, maybe it's just late. I, I, the third name's not popping into my head.
Yeah, we probably should announce them all at once, and...
Yeah, I would, I would agree. Why don't we hold off on that then? Thank you.
Did we, did we, we didn't announce the names even by email, did we? Bob?
No, I don't think so. No, but we have a, a full packet with all of their...
Yeah, yeah, so you're gonna be sending that out ahead anyway, right?
Yes.
And we're gonna have a participation from the consultant in the interview process?
That's correct.
So are we, is he gonna provide some sample questions, or not?
Yes, we have some suggested questions.
And we'll get those ahead of time?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Have you ever worked with Bernie Lynch before?
I'm not sure, Mark.
Consultant, yeah, he's really good.
I'm not sure.
He's good.
I have or not.
He, he, he'll do a great job.
Sounds familiar, but like...
Bernie's been around.
All right.
Well experienced and, and does a lot of these...
We have to meet with him a little bit ahead of time, or no?
I, you know, I don't...
Be getting it all in, uh, in email?
We'll, we'll get that, we, we may start 15 minutes early, just to get oriented to the, to the whole process.
And all the candidates have confirmed?
Except for, we had all three, you know, we moved it to the 19th, so we can get all three. And there is one candidate who's from out of state.
Right.
And who initially agreed, you know, we're gonna fly him up, so I wanted all three in person. But he has subsequently reported to Mr. Lynch that he has another engagement the next day, so he can't fly up. And he asked if he could meet remotely. We didn't have much of a choice. I told him, yes, he could, he could meet the board remotely.
Got it.
I was disappointed, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, I would like to make a pitch that our consultant have a conversation with the board first, and we engage Bernie and talk a little bit about the process. I guess the question I'm gonna have is, well, if we're having one call-in, they can easily watch the meeting on TV.
True, yeah.
So, that would probably limit the kind of interaction that we have. But I, I do think that Mr. Lynch is a very, very talented guy, and I think maybe even for the benefit of the community, even getting at least some public discussion with him about his role, his work, the importance of the position. He could also shed some light on the challenge that Yarmouth finds itself in, in terms of filling the position. This has become a very difficult position for many municipalities to fill, and I think having some context from him...
It's gonna get a lot worse, too.
Huh?
It's gonna get a lot worse, too.
I think so, yeah. Would that be of some valuable?
I, I think it would be great, and I, I would pass along one request that I received from Mr. Lynch, is that, he asked that we put on the agenda for just the potential for a vote, if the board so desires. And it was his feeling that in this particular recruitment, taking the additional time, if it was a clear choice, right, would not serve the process. That he's concerned that, you know, these types of candidates are few and far between, and they may have competing offers.
So would the interview and possible vote would be on the agenda?
Impossible vote, and then see how you feel at that time, and you can make...
We can get a temperature check.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I think that's a very smart move.
Should be, yeah, 'cause if we, if we decide we, we, we're not ready to vote, then no, no harm, no foul, right?
Then would the beginning of our meeting be executive session, so that we can confer with him, or is that open discussion?
I don't think there's a basis for which, for which we can have executives.
Right now, we're at the point where, in the, in the recruitment process, right, we've moved from the preliminary screening, where you're allowed to do it in executive session, to the final process, which precludes the executive session. So any, any of the discussion, we're just gonna have to have outright.
Yeah.
Yeah, we usually try to kinda hold the candidates off when they, we have all of them present, you know, in another room, and that works fine. But with one guy that's gonna come in remote...
Would it make sense for the person that we're interviewing on a remote basis to go first, and the other ones to be here and secluded in some way?
Well, I'll tell you, we, we had a long discussion about this, and I'm going with, with Mr. Lynch on it. We have set it up so that the, the first one is gonna be the remote one, and then we're gonna have the two people. And Mr. Lynch felt very strongly that we shouldn't do the, the situation that we did with the public safety candidates, where we sequestered them. He, he felt that the, the level of, you know, professional sort of detail on this position speaks for itself, that, that it's his opinion that you could sit and, and, you know, watch someone's entire interview. And if you tried to, you know, use that information or copy it, you'd probably hurt yourself more than help yourself, that, he doesn't feel that there's...
That would be necessary.
There's any necessary sequestering required at all. And we had, we had that, we had that discussion at, at length, and I know he feels strongly about it.
I'm not so sure I'd go along with that.
Yeah, I think there's a part of me that would rather be safe than sorry. I mean, I have enormous respect for Bernie Lynch.
I mean, I would just stay with what we've, we've done in the past. It seemed to work fine. I mean, then you got the issue of public perception, you know, people say, wow, this guy saw this, this guy saw... You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Even if they're, even if they're clean, I mean, you might, you might raise some suspicions, which is not a difficult thing to do.
Yeah. What are we gonna give, 45 minutes per interview? Break after?
Oh, I think, I think, I think we're...
An hour per?
Five, six, and seven. That's the time. So you don't have to take the full hour, but the...
I think that's how they schedule them out, five, six, and seven, yeah. So, that's too bad that that other candidate can't come, you know? But I suppose if, if he was, or she, whoever it is, it was our person, we could always ask him to... we could always ask him to come, to meet him, right, before we appointed him.
That's right.
So, all right. Anything else on that meeting at all, on the next one, next week?
No, we're going to try to keep it to that item. I don't anticipate any other.
No, that's it, then we're not doing anything else. Okay, we're going to put the fire guys on for the 26th, was it?
That's correct.
That's going to be a carryover.
I think that turned out to be a wise decision, you know.
Oh, you did it ever?
We very much regretted putting that off because I know everyone was looking forward to it.
I know.
Yeah.
I told the chief that too and.
Especially with kids and their wives and, no, no, this wouldn't have been.
Oh, yeah, obviously, that, that would have.
Climate for that.
Wouldn't there be enough room?
No. It was always my intention to finish my tenure here without using this gavel, but that wasn't to be. Okay, so on the next meeting.
Well, I would recommend that at a future meeting where you think you might need to use the gavel, you bring the one that's up in the administrator's office.
The two-handed one?
Yeah, yeah, just by, it's mere presence.
The one that looks like a medieval battle axe, yeah.
It's mere presence.
That's the one I'm going to bring next time.
Dating enough.
Do you want to keep a placeholder for this migrant issue? We should, we should.
Yeah, I think we should too. I agree with you.
On the 26th?
Yeah.
I agree.
We're going to get an update on, on that issue, Bob. I think there will be, I think there will be material to update on that. Good, good, good catch on that one. We have new police officers coming in on the 26th as well as the fire guys?
That's right.
We do, two new ones?
Very safe.
Yeah.
Presentation, draft tech memo, Yarmouth Estuarian Water Quality Database, Discussion of Cape Cod Metro Planning Organization Election Process and Review and Approve Draft Goals. Yeah, we kicked that off. We originally had that on for tonight, the draft goals, but as we, as better judgment prevailed, we decided that it probably wouldn't work very well tonight. So we took that off. So that's kind of a carryover item.
Yeah, I'd like to make a suggestion regarding the Yarmouth, the technical memo, the Yarmouth Estuarian Water Quality Database memo. I'm not entirely sure what that is. But what I'd like to make a pitch for is maybe on October 10th, move that to the 10th with maybe more of an update on wastewater. And I'd like to maybe see if we could have a discussion about this PFAS question and the airport in PFAS and maybe get some update from Jeff and Lori on their assessment of what we know and what we don't know and how we're going to find out.
You want that on for?
I would pitch that on the 10th because the 10th looks reasonably light, Mr. Chairman.
It's very light so far.
So maybe it's time.
We have town meeting stuff too, so.
For the 10th?
Well, you have the county town meeting warrant.
Yeah?
Okay.
And then, and then on the 10th.
Any zoning articles, are there? Be that many, are there?
No, there's, there's, I know there's the ADU.
Yep.
And I'm still going through my, I don't know what else.
There's a public hearing coming up on that pretty soon, on the ADU.
Yeah, that's true.
All right, so we're going to get an update on wastewater?
Well, I'm just recommending that we take that memo, move it to the 10th for any relevant, make it, make it at least a water discussion. And I would pitch an update on what we know about PFAS, particularly as it relates to the airport and the extent to which PFAS pollution is migrating, you know, into Yarmouth.
Okay, so that's for October.
And I would, I would make it clear that, you know, there may be PFAS, but we, we just may not know where it's coming from. I mean, the airport is a contributor, the county's a contributor.
And the properties north, they claim are passing through the airport.
Exactly, so there, there are a lot of other potential sources of contamination. So the, the challenge may be figuring out whose PFAS is whose, right? But at least we need to know, if we don't know the source of it, but at least know, you know, if it's gone past the wells and, you know, if it's found its way. Because there are some, there's information regarding, from other sources, a Harvard study and some other study, that a number of folks in the community have been referencing, indicating that PFAS seems to be in the Mill Pond Marshes and in the Mill Pond area. So I think we just need to be, I just feel that every time someone brings it up to me, I feel just ill-equipped to answer the question.
Yeah, that's a good one. Hey, we're going to have, by the way, an executive session on 26th, right? With our council, what, what time do you say, 5:00? He had a commitment?
Yeah.
5:00.
So we should make a note of that, right?
I'm going to be very anxious to follow Dennis's meeting tonight too. I'm going to be very anxious to follow that Eagle Pond case and see what they do with that. I mean, part of me says they may appeal it and part of me says they may figure, well, that's kind of out of the way. It's better than having it in another location. So just want to see what, the building inspector already, already gave him the green light.
Already on that? Oh, that's interesting.
But, but they can stop, apparently they can stop it with an appeal, but they'd have to appeal their own board. But, but, well, I would do that if it was an important enough issue. I would, I wouldn't want to, but, you know, I think we, if we were put in that situation, we might very well say, this is awkward, we don't really want to do this, but we feel we have to do it. And then the board you're appealing would come to you and ask for money for a lawyer and you say, no. That's how, that's how those kind of politics go and those kind of dynamics go. It's, I've seen it in this town too, but rarely. I, but I have seen it before.
Now, the other potential agenda item that might fit within this timeframe, and again, I don't want to get in the way of dealing with whatever we need to deal with, with town meeting, but I'm just wondering if there's a value, it's been a while since we've, the last time we talked to the fire chief was when he came, when he arrived.
Right.
He's been on the job now for how many months?
Yeah, no, I, I've actually, I've actually talked to him.
Yeah.
And just in happenstance, ran into him actually. And they're working on a, kind of a needs assessment. I forget the name of it, it almost sounds like SWAT or SWAC or something like that. And they are going to be coming in. I don't know when, but I, I understand they are kind of working on something to present to us as to what their needs are. He did say that they're, they're short-staffed. He did say they needed.
We swear in 10 new ones, we're still going to have.
He did say they needed, kind of like, I believe, I'm just speaking from memory now, at least two additional officers or firefighters per shift and there's four shifts.
And a captain.
And he said also that there are times, believe it or not, that.
Right.
The place isn't, one of the.
Right. My understanding is they have a captain actually going out on ambulance runs, right?
I know there's some needs there that are important. Can you kind of follow up and see when he's, he might be ready for that? And it'd be nice, really, as Mark, I think, was suggesting, we haven't really heard from him other, you know.
Well, we know, you know.
Other than when he was appointed.
Yeah, we know he's busy and we know he's doing a lot of work with Bob. And he's really getting himself acclimated, yeah, I think. I'm just dying to find out how he's doing, how it's going and what some is, some of his recommendations might be.
Yeah.
You know? So the other thing that I would put on the agenda for after the town meeting is a discussion on a draft communication plan with our new communications director. And maybe, and maybe we can at least have a discussion on the scope for that. I think we should do that right after town meeting.
Which would be the 21st.
You think? Is that too pushy, Bob?
No, that sounds good, that sounds good.
No, I, you know, I want to get her in here before that, at least to start, do the introduction, start the process. And then, you know, because we were talking about coming up with a strategic plan and you guys are the key stakeholders, so if, if we can, if we can get her in to at least introduce to the board and then talk about, you know, the, the process for getting together on strategic communications plan.
I think we should use it as an opportunity for us to at least, so as she's thinking about it and working on it, at least put some of our ideas, some of the things that we, we feel very important about, you know, that are important for a communications plan. It should be an interesting conversation, so, Mr. Chairman, we have a chance just to kind of sort of lay out some of the things that we think will be crucial in a communications plan so that she, at least going into this, she gets a sense of what we're looking for and what we're interested in. And sort of begin that conversation so that it might be a kickoff for the planning process and putting that together. Does that make sense?
Oh, it'll be great and we were actually counting on that, so.
Yeah.
But are you thinking, Bob, that you want to bring her in like on the 26th, just introduce her to us? Or you want to wait until?
Well, I, I was kind of thinking almost that October 10 date if.
Yeah.
If, if we had a little extra time.
Yeah, I think that would.
I, we, we could bring her in on the 26th for, you know, we might not have as much time on the agenda, but just to, to meet her and, because she's, she's jumped right in and, you know, she was on our governor's briefing this afternoon, this, you know, when she was here this evening.
I think the 10th will work fine, don't you?
I think the 10th is fine. I don't feel any sense of urgency. I think, I, I, we can't, we have to be careful on this migrant issue to, I mean, if we've, you know, that, that could turn out to be another lengthy discussion as we know. If it's on the agenda, we're going to have folks from the community here.
Yeah, but they can't expect the kind of time they got tonight. This was more of a.
I understand, all I'm saying is.
Opportunity to let them vent and to let them express their concerns. And also hopefully they walked away with a clear understanding of some of the issues.
I think if, yeah, I, I think one of the biggest things that leads to my discussions with people leaving the meeting, the thing that was brought up by, I, I'm not sure who, I think Bob brought it up, but maybe others on the board did, was the fact that the motels are submitting proposals to the state. There's an RFP process, there's criteria, and that's where the interactions are taking place with zero knowledge of the town.
Yeah.
And, and quite frankly, just the process alone, I think folks found incredibly enlightening and somewhat disturbing that the town isn't even in the loop, you know? I mean, you would think that before making an award, right? How about some due diligence? How about someone coming into the town of Yarpins and saying, hey, we've got four proposals here where people can do this? You know, what can you tell us about these proponents related, right? Something.
That reminds me of even when you're a kid, you didn't just show up at dinner with friends, you had to call your mother ahead of time and ask her if it's okay, you know?
Exactly, right, don't you think?
Common courtesy.
Just all of us.
Shouldn't we be putting probably a placeholder for the migrant on each of our agendas? Up to, say, town meeting?
Well, we, we, 20, the 12th, the 12th to 20.
It gives you the flexibility to deal with it.
26th they're on.
If it's just there, you don't, you know, you can always take it back off, but I think.
I would, I would at least think of it as a town manager's update. All right? Town administrator update at least.
Yeah, let's do that, Bob. Let's put a TA, update on the migrant issue on the October 10th.
Yeah, I think.
Good, good, good catch, we'll do it that way.
I think at the very least there. And we'll know if the, if the update is significant and warrants his own agenda item, then that'll become pretty evident and then we could make it a separate.
Okay, good.
I was approached by the Yarmouth Commission on Disabilities.
Yeah.
I met with the chairman and the vice chair. They have developed a set of bylaws that they'd like to present to us as a possibility for our approval. But also they mentioned that they have never met with the Board of Selectment. This is a new group that's been reformed since COVID.
Okay.
So perhaps we could find a spot where we can put them on. They had some very interesting, I don't, won't steal their thunder, but they had some very interesting things to say about handicap parking, for instance, in the town.
But, but I do think, Mr. Chairman, if, if they have bylaws, the bylaws have to be approved by town meeting. So, I mean, there is, there's a whole process. We wouldn't be the ones approving the bylaws. Maybe they just have a set of recommendations or some, you know.
Well, I think that's part, they're looking for guidance, they're looking for us to, you know, but they're also looking for an opportunity to speak up. You know, like, they, they brought up, they brought up a very good point. When I was, when I was chairman of the Recreation Commission, Debbie was there. We never consulted Disability Commission for our all-inclusive playground. And I went, you're right, we never did. You know, like that they're offering themselves to all the other committees and boards that are out there.
Yeah, I think.
Share their expertise.
When we resurrected that committee, it was done principally at the insistence of the previous town administrator. And I think his intention was in creating the committee was to utilize it as a resource, sort of with other committees.
Well, that's what they're saying.
Right, well, that's, that was what the intention was. And I'm, I'm not sure, and again, I'm not, I'm not trying to be critical of anybody, but I'm not, I think that's what they were told, but then the question is, is it may be that that's not happening and I'm not blaming anybody, it just may very, it would be, no one, no one passed on the marching orders or the charge or the, the, the vision for that committee. But I do know when I was the appointments chair, the town administrator, Knappick, he, he made it very clear that he thought it was incredibly important that we create this committee, that we set it up and that it have the ability to interact and advise other, other committees and other departments on things that needed to be done sort of more internally, so.
But as I say, they, they just would like to come and, and speak with us and, and hear for our, our suggestions. And it brings up that.
I'm not against the.
All of our boards and committees out there are all hardworking people and we don't necessarily set aside a point once a year. You know, we do for Community Preservation, we do for, you know, certain, but not all the committees and boards come before this.
We used to do everybody, but then it got to be kind of difficult to schedule, so. I think it's good to get them in and if they have any proposed or even if they think they're kind of all set with the bylaws, which they wouldn't be, as Mark said, but have them bring those or get them to us in advance so we can read them and maybe give them some suggestions.
Right.
And maybe help them develop some definitive bylaws that we can pass on through town meeting.
Yeah.
Well, I think they have something that they'd be willing to share with all of us. So if we could look at perhaps putting them on the agenda in, say, November or December?
Yeah, I would say probably looks like December 6th or 19th, somewhere in there. We'll leave that, I mean, leave, we'll see how the schedule goes, but we'll get them in, we'll get them in somewhere in there. I think would be the best thing.
Okay.
Anybody got anything else on the agenda? I think that was a good discussion. Individual items. Mark?
I do, but you know what, in the interest of time, it's late in the hour, I'm going to, I'm going to pass, Mr. Chairman.
Ken? Darkus?
Same.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to just use this opportunity to say just a couple of things about tonight's meeting. First of all, and I mean this most sincerely, I want to thank everybody on the board. You guys were, did a great job handling all of this discussion, at times commotion, at times disorder. Everybody showed a lot of restraint, a lot of patience. And there was a very cohesive cooperative effort among the board members and our administrator. So, and we did the best we could. There's some people out there, no matter what you do, they're not going to be satisfied unless you start a civil war. And that's to be expected. But if we could, I mean, I'm hoping that's a dry run and when we meet with this group again, the disorderly people won't be a part of this because it would have been. have been a much more effective and pleasant meeting if that were the case. But I hope also that they received a message that this isn't gonna turn into some kind of a charade with people yelling and screaming at each other and causing, you know, disruption, we're not gonna tolerate that. And I'm using this opportunity to serve a stern message to that effect, to these, to this group, to every person in this group. But most of them behaved, most of them were, um, I understand this is a very difficult issue, people are really energized, really excited, they're really.
Angry.
Angry, whatever, that's to be, that's to be expected and I don't have a problem with that, but I do have a problem with people just being defiant and trying to shut down the meeting or disturb the meeting, we're not gonna tolerate that. But again, you know, I, I'm very impressed and very grateful for the conduct of all my colleagues on the board and our town administrator, guys performed exceedingly well tonight, so thank you. That's all I have to say on that.
Mr. Chairman, I think you did a great job.
Thank you.
Coordinating the meeting tonight.
So now we got the consent agenda.
Don't move. How does that sound, Bob?
Oh, who's in favor?
Hi.
Alright, anyone opposed? Now we have, do you have any updates? Bob?
Just.
Run for cover?
Quickly, I, you know, um, this, this migrant issue, I, you know, thank the, the board for meeting tonight, it, it's been just overwhelming the last couple of weeks, we're on this day, night, weekend and we'll continue to, to work hard on it. I just wanted to make sure board members were aware, the deadline for the submission of articles was today for the town meeting, so we're gonna start jumping in immediately to get a draft, so you'll be able to look at what articles that we have all pulled together.
Did we get many articles?
Um, no, there's a few.
Couple?
I, I, I would say I saw about maybe six or eight so far.
That many?
I, yeah, I haven't got to the point of, of having the whole list together.
Yeah, I'm just curious, yeah.
There's a few different things there. And, um, I, I wanted you to just mention something that we're gonna be working on, I'm, I'm sure it's gonna factor into the capital program and other things that we're doing, but, um, I started a, a little project that, you know, it's really come to my attention that, you know, some of the things in terms of we're cleaning up, doing a lot of improvements, that there's one area that I was kind of surprised with a town this size, that the capacity that we have for records, storage and document management is what I would consider to be extremely poor. And, um, so this is a project with our town clerk, IT director.
You don't like our old water department building with the leaky roof?
Yeah, it's ridiculous. It's, and, and you know, and it's a big problem and so we're, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to jump on that and, and make a, a lot of improvements and I, and I think some of those areas and, um, I just wanted to let you know that it's something that
I'm glad it's on your radar screen.
We've got a little team together, we'll, we'll keep you guys updated, but it, it's gonna take work, it's not just about the physical records, it's about the, as you mentioned, the places that we're storing them there. So, that's just a couple of things, I'll hold my.
Can we try to get from the, um, the Commonwealth, any materials that were submitted by vendors?
Yeah, and, and Bill was bringing that up as well, too.
From motels in response to their request for, for responses?
And I'm gonna jump on that and, and, but I, one thing that I, I thought was a little troubling to me, that, you know, when I was finally, you know, getting through to the governor's office yesterday after they promised me twice that they would call and they didn't over the weekend and found out exactly who was, was, was placed where, um, you know, a little impatient with the whole process and, and I asked them point-blank, I, I wanted to know, do they have any other facilities in the town of Yarmouth that they're presently under consideration? And you can't really go by what they tell you, but they told me, um, right now, no, we don't, we're not considering anyone else, but they, she said, but, we're contacting people in your community looking for places and so that, that's what they said, so.
And on their request, they did say it's kind of gonna, gonna be on like a revolving basis, which I take to mean they're gonna get proposals.
You know.
On an ongoing, on an ongoing basis.
Basis, and they're, they're outreach and people trying to, trying to.
Persuade them to, yeah.
Can, can I ask, if Eagle Pond is where the Dennis, um, folks are going, should we be looking at our nursing homes in town? As well as the motels? I mean, Eagle Pond is a, is a rehab nursing facility. We have rehab nursing facilities here in Yarmouth.
With, with empty beds, an empty room?
I would think that, I would think that that is a possibility.
Isn't that entire facility being sold and converted? It's not a situation where they're weaving it into the management?
You think they're selling the whole thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I think, I don't, I, I, yeah, I think the question is, is, would it be renovated for that purpose or make some, cause I mean, nursing home is not the kind of place, you know, on its own that you would send people, there has to be some improvements or changes.
Again, the build, they, they, their building inspector actually has issued a permit.
Without any changes.
He's actually issued a permit.
And, you know, for all, I, I mean, I have no idea what the occupancy is in town, but, you know, there's a possibility there could be a wing open, I'm just.
I don't, I don't dispute that, we, it's, it's a guessing game at this point. I do think though that there may, there may need to be some communication within the business committee and the chamber community.
If we can monitor what our responses are, it will kinda, it won't be anything definitive, but it'll kind of give us a sense of what we can expect to come. You're getting out there a lot of responses, then that's not good news. But if you're getting very few or no responses to the RFP.
Right.
That's good news. And this is what the public has to understand, that this isn't anything between the state and the town, it's the state and these property owners. You know, they have to be willing to, to do this.
Are you, is Bob done? So I'd like to move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
I'd second that.
Okay, all who's in favor? Alright, adjourn, once again, we're adjourned.